Yes. Hi. Oh, yes. I joined almost a year ago, a year ago, pretty close to it.
I know Gus.
You know the vacancy left by Jay.
Who else is, oh, and then there's Jeff.
Oh, well, sometime if he's on the day still.
I guess Bob to send another line or whatever.
Oh, you keep them.
Yeah. Jay is certain.
We got work. When I record?
It is.
Oh, it is recording. All right. All right, we're all set. So I'm gonna call the, um, the special meeting of the Board of Trustees, Planning Commission, and DDA, specifically to focus on the Jackson Road Corridor to order, and it is 7:03. If you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation's under control, and to the right to end justice for all. And just need to adapt the agenda, which is primarily we kept our typical agenda, but we have no business or approval of meetings, reports, or anything. We're just focusing on, um, the Jackson Road Corridor this evening.
So we don't want any commissioners to vote?
No, we have no voting. This is totally a working session there. We're not taking any action this evening at all. And so with the roll call, what I wanna do is if people will just, will do roll call introductions, all right? So if, I'll just start, I'm Jan Culbertson, Planning Commission Chair, and I'll go this way.
Doug Luan, Township Planning Consultant.
Kathy Noel, Township Trustee.
Jeff Hume, Township Planning Commissioner.
Donna Palmer, Township Treasurer.
Joyce Parker, Township Manager.
Will Hathaway, the Supervisor.
I'm Ryan Abel, I'm a member of the DDA.
Julian Carey, Trustee, Chair of Road Advisor Committee. Jeff is on the committee as well.
Tim Moore, Planning Commission.
Chris Track, Planning Commission.
And I think we have Bob Hyde from the Planning Commission online, and any other elected or appointed or committee officials online that we want to make sure we.
Chief Hood is.
Chief Hood is here, all right?
His phone number, I don't know.
Okay. Is phone anyone who is on a committee?
If it is, raise your hand and I'll jump up.
All right, and then with us, um, currently in Township Hall, we have.
Pat Shulzam, I'm the Coast Advisory Committee in the CDA.
Kathy Justavage, from the Sustainability Committee.
Kathleen Brandt, I'm resident in the Compass Nation Commissioner.
Yeah, and I think we have enough chairs. We have a couple more people coming, but we have chairs, so if you'd like to come up, we invite you to come up and join the, the rec table. And online, who else do we have? Oh, I think we have Pam Boyd, Rob Pattinson, Chief Hood, and a phone. Hopefully, we'll be able to recognize the phone.
A free agent.
A free agent, yeah.
May I make a request? This TV.
It's not working. Yeah. You can request, but we need that magic wand. All right.
We're probably gonna wanna turn our chairs at some point, because everything's gonna be.
Oh, it's Roger. Yeah, is it John Marza? Okay, great.
Let me add, let me add him as a panelist.
Okay. Thank you. And then while, we're adding John as a panelist, and also Bob, hi, this is a panelist. Okay, great. Um, I'd like to move the adaption of the agenda. Are there any additions or revisions? Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Chang, all right? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Onto, uh, public comment, and with that, folks that are here, of the public, if you're, if you have any comment at this point in time, the intent is that this is gonna be a discussion. Our planning consultant is gonna lead us through a little bit of history, and the goal of this evening is to, because people have, we have Donna, who was just, we can't recalling the initial vote to make Jackson Road a, a Boulevard, and our planning consultant has been here for twenty-some years, to folks that have been on the Planning Commission a year. So the goal is for everyone to have sort of the, the basic foundation of, you know, where we are and how we got here, and then talk a little bit about the future. And in planning, you're not talking about, like, the next year or two, you're really talking, like, twenty years. And as, as Donna said earlier, you really don't know, you know, the impact of your decisions for that many years. And so it's, I think, good for people that have different perspectives, the DDA, the trustees, different histories, we have Joyce who's new, you know, really come together and get that foundation, and then talk about what are our current challenges, what are our opportunities, what do we see as this really important, because it is, you know, where the utilities are, where the transportation is, and, you know, what is the Jackson Road Corridor, and how do we see it, you know, out there in another twenty years, and what are our hopes and dreams? So that's sort of the purpose of this evening. So with that, um, public comment, um, is there anyone here who wants to, before we get started, contribute? Yeah, and we will encourage, you know, as we're doing the visioning and so forth, the idea isn't a public visioning session, but it is, you know, a, a working session, and we certainly value everybody's contributions.
I'll make public comment.
Sure.
Kathleen, again, Kathleen Brandt. I've read a lot of these materials, and I understand the underlying methodology. So I have a question, who on the Board of Trustees has read the entire master plan? Yep. I mean, the textual stuff, I know there's at least one board member who said, told me he read, he looked at the tables, and the, the meat of it is in the language, and that's why I personally objected to Heritage Woods, it was not in keeping with the language of the master plan. So I would ask that same question to the Planning Commission, have you all read the master plan? We created it. I've been through it.
Went through line by line.
Line by line. There might be one person that hasn't read it. And then, of course, I would've asked the same of the DDA, but I'm pretty sure Ryan is well versed, he's pretty well versed. Are there any implications to the DDA not having core up here?
No votes are taken.
Yeah, it's just a, okay, a working session. It's a public meeting.
I did speak with the chair, and they will be in future, it's just summertime vacations, it just happened.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
And then another comment, is it possible to write zoning regulations to encourage sit-down restaurants and discourage drive-throughs? Is it a what? Is, are there ways to write the regulations to encourage sit-down restaurants?
Yes.
In my view, sit-down restaurants benefit the residents, and drive-throughs benefit people on I-94 and residents, but I don't think it's a sustainable model for Scioto Township to keep encouraging driving cars. So if we could do that, I would think that would be excellent. Also, I don't support having PUDs outside of Seward District. I specifically said the Seward District, because I have learned that the Water District is pretty much the entire township. So if there's a, if there's a water main there, it can be tapped into. I especially have concerns about Heritage Woods, that they are extending the water line up to Mark Baker and Marshall, which potentially allows for development of Baker Road, which is not in the Seward District. And I would hate to see that an uninformed board approved another wastewater, private wastewater system. I thought that was a huge mistake, and that was related to my comments about reading the master plan. And then here's another thing, I heard through the scuttlebutt that Doug Luan is leaving Scioto Township in November, is that correct?
Somewhat correct, exactly.
Okay, then, then I would, I think this is a perfect time for Scioto Township to transition to a full-time staff planner. I think this is something we've needed for a long time. I think the economics favor that, that we get a full-time planner versus a part-time consultant. I think a staff planner will work in the best interests of the entire township, developers and residents. More on the resident side, I believe there's a bias currently for developers, I cited an example, Heritage Woods, Mr. Luan stated in April 2021, that the developers for Heritage Woods came to the Planning Commission, said they're interested in buying that property. He advised them to wait, because we're starting a revision of the master plan. And so that developer waited, and miraculously, that piece of property became part of the Baker Road Gateway, and it was targeted as high-value preservation land. So that, I think, was some action that benefited that developer, so far as to make it impossible for the farmers, the owners, to consider an easement, because their land immediately jumped in value, and they had earlier been interested in putting under easement, so that's all I have right now.
Thank you. All right. And is there anyone else online? Please raise your hand.
Oh, there's. I'm gonna get started. Rob Pattinson of Scioto Township.
Tonight, you were talking about the long-term plans for the DDA, or the Jackson area, the Jackson Road area, same thing at this point, but you're talking about the long-term plans. Earlier this week, we were discussing issues for the fire SAD. Please include in your discussions tonight, a plan to purchase property for the potential fire station along Western Jackson Boulevard towards Baker Road or beyond it. When the current station reaches its end of life, we talked about having a station at Scioto, or at Liberty Wagner, then one towards the northeast, and then one towards the west on Jackson Road. If you acquire land now, you can make it a part for residents to enjoy until it is needed for a fire station. Supervisor Hathaway, last month, you talked about the scraps, quote-unquote, of land left over from the widening of Jackson in the nineties. Scraps was a very appropriate term. Are, are any of these areas large enough for a park, maybe for a farmer's market? Are they large enough and in an area that would work for the fire station? Can we leverage any of these scraps into larger plots by purchasing adjacent properties? Also, we have no schools in Scioto Township, therefore, it is a play desert. Please consider creating a park that would include a soccer field and a basketball court. There are thousands of people who live in walking and biking distance of the Zee Jackson area and would enjoy a park like that. Lastly, PUD contributions to the fire department could lessen the needed assessment requests each year, and therefore keep our taxes lower. Since developers choose to use the PUD system, they understand that to make a profit from developing in Scioto, they must also contribute to the public good. This could be a good way to benefit developers and residents alike. Now, for the awkward and uncomfortable part, I'm concerned about the DDA and whether they have violated their own bylaws. There are two members who I believe are unqualified to continue to be members. Jeff Harshy was on the DDA for the last six years, because he was part of the company that owned 300 North Zee. Last year, they sold that property to the Smiths, so it could finally be used as it should be, and not left blighted as Mavitt did. I'm also very concerned about Mr. Harshy's lack of honor and integrity, because he never recused himself from discussions that would directly benefit his company. Not only did he not recuse himself, he pushed very hard to make Scioto Township spend four to six million dollars to widen North Zee Road. The Road Commission told his company they couldn't proceed with their shoehorn project until they resolved the traffic impact their project would inject into the North Zee area. Instead of their company paying for the issue, as is usual, he pushed hard to make taxpayers pay for it. 300 North Zee sat empty for twelve years because of Mavitt. Their neglect directly put our neighborhood in danger. The copper thieves parked here and cut through our neighbor's fence to gain access to the site. Because Mavitt wouldn't install even the most basic security systems, they stole copper for years. Mavitt's mismanagement was so bad, one of the copper thieves died in their building. Then Mavitt left the hole in the roof that the thieves used for access open to the weather for the next six to eight years. The, the moisture and, and mold damage was extensive. Their response to the copper thieves was to hire a company to come in and tear out the rest of the copper. That company left a gigantic mess for the Smiths, and they've had to clean it up. Mavitt intentionally tried to destroy the building. How is someone this incompetent on the DDA, let alone the question of why is he still on the DDA now that he no longer qualifies? When the owner of the bowling alley sold their property to Tesla, they left the DDA. When the owner of the dealership sold it, sold it, they too left the DDA. Mavitt sold their property, why is Jeff Harshy still on the DDA? The same question applies to Jay Holland. Years ago, Jay moved out of Scioto Township and retired. Therefore, he no longer has a business in the DDA. Why is he still on the DDA? Supervisor Hathaway, you have the responsibility to appoint people to the DDA. I know you don't like to answer questions during public comment, please make an exception this time and explain why Mr. Harshy and Mr. Holland are still in the DDA. Thank you for your time.
Did you, what?
Yeah, where's the camera?
Yeah, we have, it's over all of us.
All right. Rob, thanks for all of your comments, as usual, you have a lot of, of good insights. I don't know about Jeff's status, it's possible that Mavitt has other property in the DDA district, I'll look into that. I know that Jay Holland has property in the DDA district, so I think he's still qualified, but I will double-check that, too.
I dispute that he has property. He moved out of Scioto Township in 2011, it's been twelve years now.
That's his residence.
His business license is listed for his Gregory, Michigan, address. He pays no taxes in Scioto Township. He pays taxes.
I'm not sure that's true, but we can look, we can look into that.
He pays taxes in Livingston County. He does not pay taxes in Scioto Township.
I think, yeah, well, I think looking into it is.
Yeah, that's all I can do.
Well, no, you have a point, so you can do more than that.
And, well, yeah, he did, look at the facts.
Regarding the scrap pieces of land, if I remember correctly, they're just like little corners, I mean, I don't think there's any big, like the one at the corner of Parkland Plaza and Jackson Road, you know, that's.
Yeah, I, I actually had a conversation with Andy, Fire Chief, about this question, whether any of them, you know, would constitute, you know, enough space, and he said, no. I don't, I don't think they're large enough to host a farmer's market, although someone did ask about using one to hold a rummage sale. At the, and that's the one at the corner of Stapler and, and Jackson, we thought about that for a split second, and thought that would just be a traffic hazard. But the, the only piece of land that the Township owns in the Jackson Road Corridor that could conceivably be large enough is at the very end of Stapler, and, and that's not suitable for a fire station either, you need one, a fire station to be right on the main road, it has to, you know, you don't want your fire station, your fire trucks to have to cover that extra distance, that sort of defeats the purpose. So, but that's a very good question, Rob, and actually, I did talk with the chief about this, he has some vacant parcels out on the west side of the Township that he's got his eye on, and if the voters approve the ballot proposals, there will be funds that could, in theory, be used to secure land for a, a fire station for future expansion.
I wanted to respond, Rob. Rob, there are some schools in Scioto Township. There's Honey Creek School up by WISD, there's High Point School, the one next door. They're in the same building.
They share the same playground.
Yeah. Daycroft has, it's a private school, but they, they used to be a boating site, a precinct for Scioto Township. They, they no longer are, but we have schools.
Well, I think what he was meant, he meant it was a playground, is, is, I think what he was trying to get at.
Recreational.
Recreational facilities that.
But he said there were no schools.
Yes, and actually, High Point, Honey Creek is a public charter facility that people do have access to the play equipment there.
They, they do, and, and there's also some ISDs mentioned, trying to link into some of the neighborhoods, too, because there really isn't any sort of pedestrian access to that campus. All right.
One more hand up. Pam Boyd. And you have this one. Or two, I just.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, I have actually a simple request, as this is a innovative and never-before kind of meeting, would you all possibly consider having a public comment at the end of this meeting? I have nothing to offer, but I'm, I'm sure it, it's going to be an interesting process going forward, and if, if there is time, if you don't go until two in the morning, I'd appreciate an opportunity for a public comment later, thank you.
That's all promised not to go until two.
Yeah, I'm like, the point of this conference, this meeting, this special meeting we set aside is so that we spend the time talking about and interfacing with ideas about the Jackson Road Corridor. So I like to hear from the public, but I wanna make sure that we're focused on that tonight. I was the one who suggested the special meeting, and there's plenty of time for public comment, I don't wanna shut down public comment, but I for one would be against another public comment time during tonight's meeting.
But if someone wants to, if some member of the public wants to join the conversation about the Jackson Road Corridor, that would be okay, wouldn't it?
I, I think this is a working session for the DDA, the planning commission, and the Board of Trustees.
I, I think we can manage it, and, and, and if people will be judicious in their comments and focused in their comments, I appreciate everyone's ideas. So with that, I think we will, so if you have something, you know, that, that you think is a, a good idea and a contribution, and you wanna raise your hand, we'll kind of keep an eye on the, the screen, too.
Sometimes, you know, the public comments in the beginning, that's, they're just, whatever has come up for them, but when they listen, at the end, they may have other insights, and that's why I like having the two public comments sessions, and, you know, the residents, I mean, we're serving them, and they have, they should have a voice.
We are serving them, but we're also here to achieve some kind of, you know, conversation, discussion about trying to move forward on the Jackson Road Corridor.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm not against public comment, and I'm not against the public. But I am against meetings that don't achieve anything in the end. And I want to spend the time talking about the topic, subject at hand. That's my only point, but I'm just one person, I just wanna make sure that you understand what I'm saying.
And, and I leave it open, we'll go and see how the flow is, 'cause I wanna hand it over to Doug, so he can get through that foundational content, so then we can get to some of the, the ideas, and, and we have a, a kind of a SWAT exercise to do.
Okay. Before we start, since the cat's out of the bag, I just wanna mention a couple things. This is supposed to be a letter, a note going to the Township Board, but I'll just, real briefly, after being in planning for thirty-five years, I am stepping down as Vice President of Carla Wortman Associates, and that will occur, last day in the office will be the Friday, Friday before Thanksgiving. I, I will still be working for Carla Wortman Associates, so yes, I'm leaving, but no, I'm really not leaving. I'll just be taking a support role in doing, I wanna get into more project work, so I'm gonna be doing more master plans, corridor studies, zoning ordinances, development review, working more behind the scenes with our staff. Laura Cross from my office is assigned, will be assigned to continue working here at the Township, and doing office hours and attending Planning Commission meetings and that sort of thing. So I'm not technically leaving, but I'm taking a, taking a step back, and I'm doing this for family purposes. This is actually, I'm very happy about this, my wife is very happy about this, and I figured, at one point, I figured in my career, conservatively thinking, going to plan about four to five planning commissions a month, which typically I go to three a week, two to three a week, in various communities throughout the state of Michigan, I've, I've spent almost seven years of my life in a planning commission meeting, and that's seven days a week for seven years, so I think my wife is, is right in wanting me home a little bit more at this point in our lives. So with that, it's, it's been, you know, I'm not going anywhere, so, and I still will be subbing for Laura at planning commission meetings occasionally, things like that, after, you know, as we head towards the first year. So with that, that went to cat out of the bag there, that's.
Scuttlebutt.
Well, it was, there's, it was partially, fully true. So with regard to this, with regard to tonight, we were talking, we've been talking a lot at the Planning Commission about various projects that have occurred, occurred before us, and, and there's been a lot of discussion about the Jackson Road Corridor, about how we would like to see it develop in the future. We've talked about things like more residential, more high-density residential, more, you know, perhaps commercial, perhaps nodes of commercial, making it more walkable, allowing folks to cross Jackson Road, so there's, there's a lot of discussion points that are going around, but they're kind of coming from a lot of different directions. And so we were talking, and Kim's right, she suggested, you know, let's stop talking about this in piecemeal way, and why don't we get together for a meeting to start putting some of these ideas on the table, and that's really what we're here for tonight. So we're here, I don't have, I'm not coming to you tonight with, here's my plan from Carla Wortman Associates, I don't, I, we have existing plans that we're gonna go over in a few minutes, but I wanna, I want to hear from the planning commissioners, Township Board, any members from the DDA. By the way, we're taping this, so members of the DDA can watch this later, if they would like. So I, I would like to get comments from all of you on how you think the Corridor has developed over time, what you'd like to see within the Corridor, we have some constraints, which we'll talk about, and, and all of that. I'm gonna start with talking about some of our existing plans that we have within the Corridor, the current master plan as adopted in 2021. The Jackson Road Corridor Plan, that's part of the master plan, go over some maps that are within that, within the master plan, we're gonna talk a little bit then about zoning, so we're gonna talk about existing planning. What you'd like to see within the corridor. We have some constraints which we'll talk about and, and all of that. I'm going to start with talking about some of our existing plans that we have within the corridor, the current master plan as adopted in 2021. The Jackson Road corridor plan, that's part of the master plan. Go over some maps that are within that, within the master plan. We're going to talk a little bit then about zoning. So we're going to talk about existing planning, existing zoning. Primary zoning for the Jackson Road corridor is the J-Rod, we thought of J-Rod, Jackson Road Overlay District, probably one of the best acronyms I ever came up with. It sounds like a certain New York Yankee, but it's, so the J-Rod and then we're going to talk a little bit. I've got some mapping on his existing sewer, sewer service area. Sally's on the line and she's, she'll be able to help answer any questions. Again, all this is to kind of give everybody background about what's going on. And then after we're done, so we have a master plan that's not that old, it was adopted in 2021. And so you see on the agenda here, I say, well, we have a master plan, you know, that's a start. So now and incidentally, just keep this in the back of your mind. Just because we updated the master plan two years ago now, going on two years ago, master plans don't have to wait for five years. I mean, you can update an entire master plan, you know, a community could do it every year if they wanted. Or you can take select parts of your community. So you can do a sub area. A sub area amendment to a master plan is a lot simpler than an overall comprehensive review of the master plan. It's less time, there's less statutory requirements for publication, or not publication, but for comment from surrounding communities and that sort of thing. After we're done with all that, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you guys. And I don't know if any of you have been involved, you probably all have, involved in a SWOT exercise, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. I'd like to hear from, we're going to go over each category. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to be typing answers that I hear or thoughts and comments that you have about, we're going to start with the strengths of the corridor. And try to go around the table. It doesn't have to be exactly around the table, but if you have something to say, I'm going to type it, type it in. We're going to then talk about the weaknesses that you see in the corridor, corridor. All that information, opportunities, which is the most exciting part. And then some threats to the township that you might see with the corridor. So then we're going to have all of this information together. We will produce a summer report with any findings that we see from this. We'll provide this to the planning commission, the township board, and then we'll determine next steps. And those next steps could be could be the development of a Jackson Road corridor plan, which we did a few years ago. Or it could be simply amend the ordinance, the Jackson Road Overlay District ordinance. So there's a couple of different, but I would see those are probably the two most likely routes that would be taken. So that's kind of the process. That's what we're going to try to do tonight. The first part of this meeting, oh, by the way, I'm going to try to keep this to two hours. I, I was thinking nine o'clock, but since we really didn't get started till seven thirty, it might be nine thirty. So we'll, we'll try to keep this. Not going to be eleven, so.
No, we're not going.
Yeah, when, when we do, when we do exercises like this that are kind of directed, we, we, we'll, we'll try to keep you guys going. So let's say nine, nine thirty, we'll try to be done tonight. So that, that's really kind of what we're, what we're planning for tonight. Any thoughts, ideas? Where we going? Okay, so the first thing I wanted to show you guys, and this is in the thing I handed out, and it's on the screen behind you. You might want to turn around and look at this because a lot of this is I'm sorry, that one's not working. I don't know why it's not working.
It works when you're not here.
No, it didn't. It stopped working at a meeting earlier this week.
What is Apricot?
I have no idea.
Lane within Scioto Farms. It's probably random street names, like nutties on there.
Yeah, so there must be something popped up with some. I noticed that too, and I, I just thought, no one's going to ask about that. But what, what this does, this is, this is data that comes actually from SEMCOG, so it's not exact, so don't, you know, let's not pick apart every particular parcel. But this is the Jackson Road Overlay District. This is, this red line is the Jackson Road sub area that occurs within the current master plan. And these are all of, just to kind of give you a feel for what's out there, we're familiar with that, what's out there, because you drive it every day, you're familiar with the community. But these are all of the existing land uses within Scioto Township. So as you can see, there's an awful lot of land uses, because we don't have a dominant color. And red is commercial, so I guess that's sort of dominant. Then we have industrial is always like a gray color, you know, a fair amount of industrial in Scioto Township. Some multifamily, some single family. Scioto Farms is showing up as single family. So there, so there's a, you know, there's a fair amount of variation here within the Jackson Road quarter. So this, so, you know, we start to talk about a mixed use district and if you think about it, we already kind of have a mixed use district, right? I mean, there's, there's already, there's a, there's a very eclectic mixture of uses along the Jackson Road corridor that range from high intensity commercial to single family residential, to even vacant property that's owned agriculture.
So not mixed use, commercial residential.
We actually do have one that's mixed use commercial residential.
And here?
The Scioto, well, no, well, this is, this is existing. These categories are from SEMCOG, so I don't think they're that specific. But we have, we have a current mixed use commercial residential project that's Scioto Town Center on the east side of Jackson, south of, across, near the just south of, of the car wash. It's a residential, second, third floor, commercial on the first floor.
Oh, woodland farm?
No, it's called Scioto Town Center.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
The Scioto condos over there.
Yeah, yeah, condos.
The sushi restaurant.
Yep.
The consignment shop is there.
What's there?
The consignment shop.
Oh, yeah.
Across the street, across the street.
It's got a little tower.
Oh, the definary.
Oh, a gem is there? Like a little clock tower. Yeah, OHM is in that complex. They've got some office and retail and, but the feature in that particular project is there. Retail on the first floor, there's condos on the second, second floor. So, so we do have one example of that, that within, within the township now. So this is again, just to kind of give you a little background, there's a lot going on here.
Of course, Woodview Commons is being built as we speak.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, a big multifamily and, and commercial.
Quite a choke point in the Jackson Road, oops, Overlay District. Right there around I mean, it kind of squeezes right there. I can't tell what that is right before.
That's Luella. That's, that's the, that's where Jillian lives.
Yeah.
That's, so when we developed the Jackson Road, the J-Rod, the Jackson Overlay District, we limited it to certain size parcels. And if you were under, I want to say 150 feet of frontage on Jackson Road of a certain acreage, you're not. And these were all, this was a known residential subdivision. And some of the Jackson Road Overlay District has architectural standards and things like that, that really lend themselves to a single family home. And so not only were they, well, they're excluded primarily due to lot size and frontage on Jackson. So if you have little lots on Jackson, there's a few other examples that are not in the district, but that's, that's a notable one, because that's, that's a known single family area. And the Jackson Road Overlay District is, was supposed to address you know, the existing larger lots and development that occurred, could occur on those lots, primarily vacant lots. Those are kind of vacant lots and now single family. And no one wanted to presume that by including in the Jackson Road Overlay District, there's some discussion at the time like that, but somehow presumed that a developer was going to buy up all those lots and turn the house down and build something. And we didn't want to make that assumption. Okay, so this is our current master plan. There's a couple of things that are going on here and they're better drawings, but as you can see from the current Scioto Township master plan, that the most intense development within the township is planned along the Jackson Road corridor. Primarily, as you head from Ann Arbor westward along the Jackson corridor, you go from composite commercial, which is the designation that allows auto dealerships to mixed use commercial, which allows kind of mixture of commercial stuff. And as you head up to basically Stapler Road, for the most part, except for the Baker Interchange, it transferred to office industrial, kind of office, mixed use office industrial. The point of this is, one, the little dash red line that you might be able to see in your drawings is the sewer service district, which I got a better map coming up, so don't despair on that yet. But the little red dash line is the sewer service district. So as you can see, that is where we have concentrated our more intense development within the community. Outside of that area, for the most part, has been, has remained relatively low density large lot and or one acre type lot residential development. And this is not, you know, this is not by mistake. This is, this has been the plan for, as, as Donna was saying, it takes a long time for a plan to be realized. But this has been the plan of Scioto Township for as long as I've been around. And the idea was to concentrate growth within the Jackson Road corridor while leaving the areas north of, within the township and south of the corridor within the township to relatively low density residential or low density open space type uses. And I think the township has been very successful in that and has done a very good job. And I think, I think township's done a great job. Along with, along with this was the LPC element that we didn't used to have years ago. So Land Preservation Commission took, became part of this. They began acquiring properties either through easements or outright purchase or I've got a map of that at the end also, or with leveraging monies through city of Ann Arbor and the county to purchase or tie up some of the more significant properties within the township. And all of that kind of started with this idea of master plan. So I did a little, on this, on the subject, just real quick. I, I went back through my little library and my cubicle to look at some of our old planning documents, just so, just to give everyone a feeling that you know, Scioto Township has a, a long history of planning activities and, and have been pretty successful in those planning activities up to this point. This is the first master plan I could find, nineteen eighty-one. Yeah, nineteen eighty-one, this might be the first master plan. Which is kind of interesting.
Doug, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two, is that the state mandated zoning requirement?
Seventy-two is our first zoning ordinance, roughly our first zoning ordinance, which I actually have a copy of here.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the this isn't the seventy-two version, this is nineteen eighty-two version, this is our, but it's the seventy-two version amended. So roughly speaking, Scioto Township's first zoning ordinance was nineteen seventy-two, and that's when a lot of communities adopted their first zoning ordinances. So there must be some, I don't know, that's a good question. There must be some correlation with the enable legislation in the state of Michigan that allowed communities to have zoning ordinances, but a lot of communities adopted zoning in Michigan around this time. In fact, most of the communities I work in, their first zoning ordinance is roughly in the early seventies, seventy-two, seventy-three. This is very interesting, nice historical document, if you're ever interested in looking at how things have changed in the township. My first master plan I was involved with here was this one here, nineteen ninety-six, the first master plan I was involved with. Actually took these pictures. Walking around the township. We then went to, we had two versions. We went from ninety-six to two thousand, two thousand and three, so this encompasses several changes. I won't, I won't bore you with the, with the pages, but if you look at the master plan map up here, there's an interesting development that occurred. In the early versions of the master plan, the, the thinking in Scioto Township was we were going to have three commercial nodes, one at Wagner, one at Zeeb, one at Baker. And we were going to leave the middle parts for office industrial. And so the idea, there were some ideas that Jackson Road quarter should be more of a jobs creation kind of area where we would have high end, you know, office industrial type jobs. And the one I always try to think of as an example, that is the Trumo site. You know, that's a job, a center that has very high paying, good jobs. I think that was sort of the vision for Jackson Road quarter to be this high tech jobs corridor. As you go through these master plans, you can see that, that idea became less prevalent in the, the, the commercial, as you see in our current master plan, the commercial has moved from the Ann Arbor area up to Stapler Road. And so that's, that has been a consistent change within the master plans is that more commercial was developed, still the western part of the township, as you see, still has this kind of office industrial kind of, kind of feel. And then we went to, we have two thousand and nine version of the master plan, previous one, twenty fifteen, and now we have our twenty twenty-one version, which is up there on the, on the, on the screen. So all of these things change. We've had a few, a few big changes on the plan over the years. And these changes occur when there's different, when things occur within a community that we didn't think of before. When there's new political leadership, new planning commissions, new ideas that we didn't either think of before or want to address before. And I think that's partly why we're here, to maybe address some of these new ideas, new thinking that we have not addressed in the past. Some of the other plans, just, just so people might be interested in. We did a Baker Road corridor plan jointly with the, back then the Village of Dexter that talked about some of the things that ended up in our last version of the master plan. We have a really, I still use this to this day, a mapping inventory of natural cultural features. That's a really good resource. And in two thousand and six was the last time we touched Jackson Road corridor as a corridor plan. So this was a plan we did in two thousand and six specifically for the Jackson Road corridor, kind of doing a process like we're doing here tonight, kind of kicking this off like we did tonight. This is the precursor to the J-Rod, to the Jackson Road Overlay District. A lot of the ideas and concepts that came out of this planning effort ended up in the zoning ordinance. And in the planning world, we say, you know, plan first, zone second. So you, if you have something in your zoning ordinance, it's supposed to be based on planning. So it's supposed to be something either in your master plan, sub area plans, a plan like this, a plan first, zone second. That's exactly what we did. We planned with the corridor overlay guidelines and then we zoned with the data. Kind of an interesting one. This, this harkens back.
Can I ask you a question, Doug?
Yeah.
Is that two thousand and six plan, was that what created our now island Jackson Road?
No, 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 no. The Boulevard?
Yes.
The Boulevard, actually, the Boulevard planning actually predates me. That was, that began planning probably in the late eighties. And that was that was actually, I have the plan. I, I don't have a list, but I actually have that Jackson Road Boulevard plan. And that was partly done by Scott Hedberg and Nancy Hedberg, back when they had, you know, back when they were doing full-time landscape architecture. They were part of that. Nancy, of course, went on to become the township clerk for many years. But no, that's, that, this was long after that. This was, this was after that.
Okay.
And then we also have an open space and greenway plan that we did a number of years ago. Many of the concepts from this ended up in our swing master plans. So we've done, you know, we've done a, a fair amount of planning within Scioto Township over the years. And this is just another step along that, along that path. And I'm pretty proud of the things we've done within the community of over the time.
You can actually explain the one that's on top of the pile, are you? I think you can.
Z-E Road Pathway.
Oh, sorry. This is, um, this is, this is the Z-E Road Pathway schematic design. Now, this is more of the precursor to the actual Z-E Road Pathway. This is not the engineering documents, but we were asked, when we kind of knew we were going in that direction, we did a schematic plan. For the most part, it's been followed. You know, OHM has taken, taken some of these concepts and engineered them. This is not the engineering plan. But this, this was, and, and the document that predated this was an effort that an effort that was head, was spearheaded by the then planning commission chairperson, Alison R. Scott, who was a landscape architect, who I, I loved Alison. She was, she was, unfortunately she passed away, but she had, she was a great planning commissioner, had a lot of great ideas and she, she really, I will tell you that just my opinion is just, I, I get to editorialize a little bit every once in a while. The pathways you see on Z-E Road and some of the efforts that are going into pathways right now really began with Alison. She, she, she did a great job. So anyway, but the, 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 the idea or the, the issue here is, you know, we, this is, doing this kind of planning is not, we do a lot of it. And this is just enough to get another step along the path. And this is just enough to get another step along the path towards where we want this community to be in the future. Let's get a little more specific. So these are the, this is taken from the master plan, I wanted to again hit on the master plan first. These are taken from the master plan. Some of you may or may not remember, and I hope, as Kathleen Brandt mentioned, I hope everyone has read the master plan. I assume everyone does. This is, uh, these are the five, two to six. These are the six sub-areas of the Syo Township master plan. So we broke down, we've been breaking down the township into sub-areas for a number of these versions of the master plan. And so, and we kind of tried to, we tried to break them down into areas that had something in common with one another. So you see the northeast quadrant, the southwest quadrant, in the quadrant that, you know, so we tried to break it roughly into quadrants. And then we have the Jackson Road corridor, which is a, you know, which obviously is, is a, is a, kind of has its own continuity to it. And so that's what we're really talking about today, it's the Jackson Road sub-area. So there's, this is defined area within our current master plan. So this is, we've already done a little thinking on this.
Man, City of Ann Arbor just mislabeled a little bit.
Yeah, that's the annexation area.
That'd be annexation.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's in the gray area.
We're trying to forget.
You're up in the Chiron River sub-area though, so I think we could.
Okay. So I think it's important, and you guys have your, you have your hand out, so you don't have to look at the screen. But I think it's important to look at the development strategy. So within the master plan, there's, there are development strategies for the Jackson Road, for the Jackson Road corridor. These are more specific, there are, there are general development strategies for the master plan. Master plan generally, what I mean by that is we go back to this plan that's up on the screen right now. This is the, this is the overall future land use plan. And then you go to this plan, this kind of reminds things and is talking about areas more specifically, where we have Jackson Road more specific. And each one of these sub-areas, by the way, has its own set of design and kind of goals and policies. And so these are the kind of development strategies, specific development strategies for the Jackson Road corridor. So of course, some of these are ideas that have been passed along through other master plans. And we talk about retail uses, infill, infill commercial development, you know, office industrial, number two, support office, foster the corporate high-techs, jobs node. I think that's a discussion, as I mentioned, from a number of planning, master plans ago, but that it's still valid to this day for some of the development we have out there. Highway commercial, we do have two freeway interchanges at Baker and Zeeb. We can't, you know, we can't pretend we don't have those freeway interchanges. Encouraged, now, where, where we get a little different in our, from our previous master plans is we're getting to number six, when we start talking about encouraging high-density residential and commercial uses as part of overall mixed-use development proposals, which support office industrial research and land use. That may have been in the previous master plan, but this, this is where we start to get into some new ideas in this master plan. I don't know what figure three is, so excuse me on that one. But in addition to those used to depict and figure through the sub-area, make it sort of multifamily residential, when it appears part of an overall PD proposal. I think this is a new development strategy. Multifamily use or mixed use or standalone shall be considered when sanitary sewer capacity is available in excess of that available and underlying planned in this own property. So we're, we've, the planning commission had discussions about this. There was some discussion that we should be thinking about multifamily. That's, that's, you know, kind of a newer thought coming along the Jackson corridor. If you look at the history of the master plans that, that I'm aware of. Promote public transportation, promote walkability, establish new linkages from the existing non-motorized pathways and others. Township protect natural features and considering, consider developing form-based guidelines within the sub-area. So we already have, we have a description of a sub-area. We have some development strategies. In my opinion, we could run with this. This is, you know, I said you all have to have that planning first, zone second. There's enough, there's probably enough here for us to do a form-based code on the, on the, on the quarter. If that's what the community wanted, to do a lot of those. Master plan doesn't have to be exactly specific to what you want to do, but there has to be, there have to be enough linkages between the zoning and, excuse me, between the master plan and the zoning. Because what you don't want is to be in front of a judge and have a zoning standard or ordinance that has no relationship to anything else in your community. So if you have, say you have a zoning standard on, I don't know, you have a zoning standard that prohibits development of a circumkind or who knows what. And there's no talk of it anywhere except in your zoning ordinance. You know, you, you run the risk of, of at least the, the people who are suing you trying to say that your zoning ordinance is arbitrary. They might use the word capricious, but that's more of an arbitrary term. So they, they would say your zoning ordinance is arbitrary. So you have to base your, your ordinances should be based on something. And that's, that's a requirement in state law. And that something is a master plan. The state law, Public Act one ten says zoning is supposed to be based on a plan. Well, that plan is the master plan. So, so we, I think we're, we are in pretty good shape to begin work as long as what we come up with tonight and maybe in ensuing meetings doesn't diverge too far from this. If what we want to do diverges a lot from these existing strategies, then I might suggest that we do a master plan sub-area, if that's, if that's the direction.
Doug, if I may ask you a question?
Yep.
So our master plan, and sometimes it's very broad, broadly written.
Yes.
And it talks about multifamily, right, in the Jackson Road area. But it also talks about a lot of other things. And when you say you think we have a good foundation in our master plan to start doing some of these things that we've been talking about in the planning commission, you have any concern about where the master plan says we want to develop more commercial along Jackson Road? Do you have any, any doubt in your mind or about going forward? Or you think there's sufficient mentioning in the master plan about the residential?
I, I, I think there is. And I think particularly that number eleven, when we talk about considering developing form-based code guidelines within the sub-area, that, that opens a big window for us. Form-based code, I'll get real broad for the board members, I'm going to talk a little bit about this planning commission. You know, form-based code as opposed to a standard zoning code, form-based code is more interested in the location of buildings and the form of buildings rather than the use. So you could have, it really lends itself to mixed use. So it's kind of more like, think about an old, old-fashioned downtown where you've got a pharmacy and you've got a hotel and you've got an apartment and you've got a single family, you know, a duplex or who knows what, and then a commercial building. And they're very close together, they're relatively close to the road. Promotes walkability, some of the other things we talk about. But form-based is more interested in the form of the development. Where traditional zoning is more interested in the uses. So you have, like, for example, in zoning districts, you have a commercial zone. Thou shall not have anything other than those listed in the C-one or C-two zone can go in this location. You're not so much worried about that in a form-based code, you're more, you're talking more about what the building looks like, where it's located, how it functions with the neighboring properties, that sort of thing. So I think we're.
So like in our zoning, we talk about commercial, C-one, C-two, R-one, A-one and all that. And that's more focused on uses agricultural, commercial, industrial.
Yes.
Versus this form-based.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Now, the form-based, you can do a couple of different things with form-based. You can do a form-based overlay where you just put a form-based on top of your existing zoning that allows a variety of uses within that district. Or you can just blow out your existing zoning and come up with a whole new district that just shows up in your zoning map as form-based. So either way, I mean, that, that's, that's a lot of steps from now, even if that's the direction. Who knows if that's the direction we want to take. When we did the Jackson Road overlay, the J-Rod overlay district, it's, there are form-based elements and we did that on purpose. The Jackson Road overlay is an overlay district. It has some of the, it has some of the hallmarks of a form-based code in that we have maximum setbacks instead of minimum setbacks. Buildings are only supposed to be located, they're not supposed to be located any further back than a certain point. We allow a lot of mixed uses within the Jackson Road overlay district. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of form-based ideas that on purpose, we knew this. We didn't want to go full-on form-based back when we adopted the J-Rod, but we incorporated a number of those concepts that were never incorporated before. This idea of mixed use was never a thing before. The Jackson Road overlay district has actually promoted quite a bit of development within the quarter that would not have occurred otherwise, Jackson Road corridor.
Are we coming back to talk about any of these things? Or is now the time to talk about what's in this Jackson Road sub-area development strategy?
Why don't we come back? We're not really talking about these, I just wanted to show you what's in the current master plan.
All right.
And then if you want to get into, when we get to the SWOT exercise, if there's some issues that you want to bring up, we can. So this is the current zoning map, which most of us are familiar with. Hard to see, but the, the Jackson Road overlay district is actually on this map. It's like it's a little pink. I won't, it, it's, it's along the Jackson Road, so just, just trust me, it's there.
Yeah, I blew it up and it's going to screenshot something.
Yeah, if I, if I blew this up, you'd be able to see it. But if I blow it up, then I'm probably just. So, but as you can see from like our zoning map, there's a variety of, there's a variety of zoning districts on the quarter. We have, you know, C-four, P-U-D, O-S, I-one, A-one, I-two, C-two, O-one, you know, it's pretty much almost every zoning district that we have is contained within the Jackson Road corridor. So this is a, again, talking about background, this is a, a good map to see. This is a, has two, shows two things here, shows the DDA boundary. Who's in the DDA, right? So, no, are you on the DDA? Yeah. Oh, oh, you're on DDA, okay.
I'm, I'm both.
So the black line is the DDA boundary line. The pink area bordered by the red dashed and dotted line is the township sanitary sewer service area.
Can you slow down, Doug?
Yep.
The, the black line is where?
The DDA. That's the DDA boundary. I think you're on the wrong. It's up on the, it's up on the.
This one.
Oh. So say it again, the black line is the DDA?
DDA, yep. And, and, and the red to the pink is sanitary sewer service area. Of course, the DDA is the township's TIF district. So we have the ability to capture taxes within that district. I am no expert at TIFs, but the general idea is that the township can capture the increase in property value at, at a certain rate and use that money to invest within the district. The, so basically the community is getting their own tax money back to do things within the community.
And some of, some other entities that might otherwise go out.
Yeah, and now, of course, what the DDA was set up for and what the TIF was used for up to this point is the Boulevard.
And water, water was first.
Water's a, okay. So utilities and the Boulevard is what the TIF, what the DDA TIF has been used for historically. There is a, there is actually a final phase to the Boulevard that was never constructed, but conceptually planned. And that's from Baker to Lima Township. Not sure if that'll ever happen. I don't know if you guys ever talked about that.
It's been talked about, but.
So that's, uh, you know, the, these two are, these are two interesting maps, particularly the sewer service area. And I'll say a few things about sewer service area, because we probably talked about this when we get into the SWOT exercise, too, certainly. The sewer service area has been the township's most, I would, I would say, in my opinion, the most significant growth management tool that we have and that we've ever had and probably will ever have.
In a good way or a bad way, or it just is what it is?
In a good way.
Good way.
I believe, I believe it. Because it has allowed, it has allowed those areas of the township that residents have desired to remain rural and open space, to remain rural and open space. It promotes development within an area that has sewer service. And has, has allowed, you know, has allowed me as a planning, as a, your community planner, when a developer comes to me and asks to do something outside of the sewer service district, it's an easy answer for me, you know, you can't do it. You know, I, I, you know, I hear about, you know, my interactions with developers and it's true, I interact with developers every day here at the township. What doesn't get reported is my, is, is all of the development that never hits anybody's table because we tell them no. And that happens on a pretty regular basis. Because if you're outside the sewer service district, if you're not zoned properly. Now, I can't tell someone no, but I try to guide them to a certain degree so that they're not wasting the time and money. But of course, anybody, the other thing that I think people don't quite understand sometimes is that people have the right to fail, you know, people have the right to be denied. And so we get some proposals that I would never endorse or kind of scratch my head about myself, but people have the right to apply. They can pay their money, pay, pay your money, take your chances. And that happens sometimes. But, and then it's up to the planning commission and township board to do what they have to do to, to, to either deny or approve those projects. But this is, this sewer service district is a very effective growth development tool. It has allowed us to maintain growth in the area that we want growth. It's been able, enabled us to preserve open space where we want open space preserved. And the other interesting part of this that most of you know is that this is dictated by a contract between City of Ann Arbor and Syo Township. So moving those lines is not easy, it's very difficult. There has, it's my, it's my understanding that there has to be a joint agreement between the city and the township to move these lines. And Kathleen's nodding her head, so I think that's true. And, and that's not an easy, that's no easy task to, to, to make, to make that change. So that is, that is why this is, this always shows up in our master plan. And that's why we, you know, show this and why it's such an important part of what we do here in the Syo Township. Now, does the sewer service district change occasionally to accommodate new growth? It has over, over time, not much, but it has occasionally it changes.
Is that how I got out to Liberty?
Yes, yep. Yeah, the last contract that we negotiated with the City of Ann Arbor, we kind of squared off a few areas. What is now known as Syo View Development, which is Mark and Linda Smith's property, that was not in the sewer service district. And during the last negotiation with the City of Ann Arbor, that was added to the sewer service district. Part of what is now Woodview was not in the sewer service district previously, that is now within the sewer service district. So it does, it does change occasionally, but it's not very often. And.
Were those sidebar agreements or subsequent agreements, or had those, were those recent additions?
Those were additions at the last contract negotiation.
Okay. So if we have a contract, or for so many already used, we need their permission to expand the.
I, I believe, I believe the district is both capacity and location. So it's both map and, map and capacity. So yes, we would need their permission to do that.
And we've tried, we stuck to that. Been really strong with it because before we had a definite district line that you can see, we had people south of that who had large tract of lands, they wanted to develop. We, we could get this. We, we could get the sewer and all of a sudden we realized we had a big open door way back when. So we definitively created. And it was already in that direction anyway with what had happened, but we specifically made the official line.
It's, it's not uncommon, it's not uncommon in other communities for a developer to extend utilities when they don't have such a defined sewer service district like Syo Township has. It's, it's in fact, it's very common for a developer to come to a township, say, hey, I will extend the sewer line. I'll pay for it. It's not on the township. And then they expand, expand it and put in, you know, very dense subdivision. That, that doesn't, that, that's not even a question at Syo Township. It just doesn't happen.
So that's where you get the urban sprawl.
That is where you certainly can get urban sprawl, yes.
Just look at West Flint, when they put the sewer in going on the west side, not Flint, Saginaw. Saginaw, Saginaw.
Well, it, it not, not going to disparage any communities because they all do what they want to do themselves. But there is a community up actually near, south of Flint. Someone listens to this, I'm not disparaging Grand Blank Township. The Grand Blank, the Grand Blank Township is a 36 square mile township, just like Syo. And they, 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 they allow developers to expand utilities anywhere in the township. And that township has grown into pretty much a 36 square mile subdivision. And it's, so you, I don't, I don't think people sometimes appreciate how unique Syo is in this regard. And then we have this, this sewer service district that we hold to partly because we have to hold to it. But it's always been my experience with township board members that I've worked with over the years that, that even if, even if it wasn't a contract, there was no real desire to expand this district. I mean, Donna's been there, you know, longer than me actually, and I think that was.
I liked the farms.
Well, the technology is kind of pushing against it and the legislature with these community wastewater treatment plants. So it's, I'm guessing it's just, it's going to be harder to hold the line.
It, it's going to be harder to hold the line. I, I don't disagree because the technologies are in the cost going down for these systems. That's why it's important to have a good master plan.
That's why it's important to have a good PUD status ordinance.
Well, we're going to talk about that.
Because we can, we can control that with these big developments.
Yeah, but it's good to have a good PUD or good master plan ordinance and PUD ordinance so that when these requests come to you, you can. You have that as.
One of those lines, you know, you said that the sewer service area was or is a good effective tool. But I'm wondering in light of what we've seen with Heritage Woods, would it be more correct to say it was an effective tool? Because I don't know, I just, we'll talk about it.
I don't, I don't think so, and I, I also disagree with the characterization that that was against the master plan because.
Well, I didn't say that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just generally, the master, that's a sub area of the master plan that specifically calls for that. And so we followed our master plan and, and it does indicate that, it does indicate that. We even talked about sewer treatment plant. There's package plants in the master plan for, for that. So because we were so specific in that location, that doesn't apply to the rest of the township. I don't think, you know, that there's no precedence, in my opinion. We followed our master plan on that particular parcel, as was vetted by the Planning Commission, approved by the Planning Commission. So I feel, I feel good about.
I would just say that's a function of our PUD ordinance. And heritage.
Okay, I think I'm coming to the end here. Now, this is the, this is the same map, but this is the a little more specific. I spoke to Sally Boss this morning. She wanted me to include this because this is the actual official sewer service. Yes, and I have to have an incorrect one. And so Sally, are you, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Sally, you and I, you and I talked this morning about, one of the things I wanted to give everyone before we get into our writing exercise, one of the things that, one of the things I wanted to give everyone an idea for, because we have, sometimes we have this idea about REUs and what does that mean? And so I wanted to try to have Sally give you kind of a verbal picture of what a certain number of REUs looks like. And I don't know, Sally, did you make any headway on that?
I did, I did. And all many of you have heard from me, there are Matt Parks, myself, Ken Early, Stacy Monty. We've given this presentation to, I think, all of you except maybe the DDA at least once over the last couple of years. So an REU is equivalent to one single family home per the agreement with Ann Arbor. We use Ann Arbor Table A, so that is 300 gallons per day is approximately what a single family home uses. So I ran a couple of examples here. I just used the nice round number of 20 REUs, so that would be a small subdivision, 20, 20 single family homes. When you compare that to some other common uses we see in the township, 20 REUs would be, like I said, 20 single family homes, somewhere between 25 and 35 mid-size apartments, small to mid-size apartments. It would be a 40 to 80 room hotel, which is relatively small for a hotel. It'd be a 200 to 300 restaurant, 200, 200 to 300 seat restaurant, depending on if it was fast food or sit-down. So that's relatively large. Um, it also would be equivalent to 100,000 square feet of non-medical office space or warehouse space, 200,000 square feet of retail space or 150,000 square feet of general industrial. So we track these REUs via, we have a theoretical spreadsheet, but about every five to 10 years, we go and do sewer metering. We actually put meters in the ground in nine to 12 spots around the township. We get the actual flows. We calculate it, we calibrate it in our model, and we get what is left remaining in the contract. So we did that last in 2019, 2020, and as many of you have heard, we're right around that 1,200 RE remaining amount. And like I said, that's theoretical. You're coming due on another metering cycle here in the next two to three years, I would recommend. Because these numbers are conservative and there's things you can do like sewer manhole maintenance. You can line sewer pipes to keep out inflow and infiltration, so you're not getting groundwater in your system. Those types of projects can also help you conserve capacity. So the metering is really important to true up your numbers to make sure you're still on track. Because theoretically, you could be out in however many years, but when you actually meter, you go back and you are using much less water than the conservative theoretical numbers indicate. And that's due to low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, just conservancy in our estimations.
And so I asked Sally to do that so that, because I know we, I was talking about REUs and I, I was trying to get a picture in my head. So you said 20, right? Sally, was it 20? So 20 REUs, again, 20 homes, 35 multifamily. You know, I, I think she said like 100,000 square foot retail, several hundred thousand square foot industrial. And so that's, so you start to think about, okay, how much capacity do we have? What can we do within the corridor? How much does certain uses, you know, how, how much, how many REUs do certain uses take? And I thought, I think it was, it was important to kind of, it's important for me to kind of get that, kind of get that thought, you know, as in your head as we go.
So it'd be fair to say there's more REUs used in residential.
Yeah.
For reference.
Yeah, one to one, one to one, yeah. One REU for every home. And then multifamily is going to be a little, you're going to get a little bit more bang for your buck on multifamily.
Slightly. However, if you're getting into the duplexes and the large apartments that are over 1,200 square feet, you're still one to one. So large multifamily units, it's the smaller ones you get a little more bang for your buck, but definitely residential is some of your heaviest use.
So Sally, with the testing day that you're doing, what type of information are you getting to give us an idea of where we stand as far as the status? I mean, are we on track or what's the status based on the testing?
So the testing and our water reliability and sewer studies show that based on population, you will technically run out of REUs sometime in the next 20 years. However, you're going to hit pump station capacity before you hit contract capacity because the pumps at the sewer pump station just won't be able to keep up with that much flow. You'll have to do improvements there before you actually do it. But there's no real on track. We just do, we get flow data from that testing, so you get a gallons per day or millions of gallons per day. And then we compare that to your contract rate that Ann Arbor allows and that, then we can back calculate how many REUs you have remaining.
So on this map that's up there, there are three different colors. One looks like kind of lighter green, darker green, and then brown. Does that mean there are different access points or different capacities or they tie in at different areas? Maybe along Syo Church or maybe along Jackson and maybe along Miller or something. What, why are the different districts and colors?
Originally, the contract had separate capacities for each different color. They really indicate different connection points. And in the, in the 2014 contract negotiations with Ann Arbor, it no longer matters which connection point is bringing in the flow. So it's just one overall between those three connection points. It's one overall flow.
Sally, was I, did I kind of characterize our, our contract in very broad sense to the group here?
Yes, yes, every, I agree with your representation of it.
All right, thank you. So anyway, a very important item. This is a map that doesn't necessarily have to do with the Jackson Road corridor, but it's a good one to kind of remind ourselves because sometimes, you know, when we talk about the Jackson Road corridor and pathways and the Zebra pathway and how that connects to Jackson Road, we start to look at public and private preserves and, you know, areas that people might want to go to. And so this is a, a map that we did in 2020. We keep this map for the township. Parks, preserves and community facilities, all the open space. Much of this is land that's been acquired through the Land Preservation Committee's work over the years.
It actually matches with that plan that you referenced just at the end of, when you were holding up the plans, the.
Of Green Line?
Yeah, that one.
Open Space Green Line.
The open space, because that's refers to the different bio reserves. And if you match it up with this, the, the lot of preserved properties sort of form kind of like a template right over there.
So I think that's our last, yeah, that's our last one. So that's kind of the background of the, of what we're talking about. Any broad questions on the background? And I'd, I'd like to take about five minutes, a little five-minute break here, and then we'll get into it for about the next 45 minutes or so with our SWOT exercise. But I gotta switch screens and I'm not exactly sure how to do that.
Five-minute break.
Yeah, or less, whenever he gets a backup on the screen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I talked to Emily. Oh, she's a municipal attorney. Emily, you know Emily? Yeah, she worked, she worked, I did, she was before me. Yeah, so I know her from, you know.
Where, where was it?
Yeah. You know, give or take.
Did you doodle on the? There's a lot of hearts and stuff.
There's all hearts and stuff on the, on the plant for animals. You can scan it and there's like a heart next to the word for course.
Something you said, if they're like doodle.
Yes. There's a heart there and then you spell that, and you spell that a bunch of pages. Yeah, there's much more scribbling about call this video. There's more scribbling at some other pages.
I just did a whole though. If I'm on the phone. So they uploaded, they grabbed the rock.
At least it had a heart and got something else. I was thought, I was thought it was funny. I'm like, okay. So we're done, great?
Yeah, we're done. We're going to fill those spots. At about four.
We're trying to get this.
Downplay, four, seven, four, four is turning on. Absolute downpour. It stopped at about 4:30. Great issue of everybody who stopped playing and went back out on the court. But I made it. I still, I got it here by seven o'clock. It was close. It should have been comfortable round, but that rain really, you know, got us back. It was. I love it. The days, those three hours, three hours. Yep, it's back to. They should get over with.
Trustees.
Yeah, well, I know that he's.
It was a scout.
That was before it changed. There are lots of projects like that.
That's not making. This is all still being.
He's just moving off the list right now.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of paper.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we kind of get, let's get back, all right, we can.
Go team.
Go team.
That's weird too, just like.
Alright, uh coming back, everybody? Alright, go ahead Doug.
Okay. Alright, so now is the uh, now is the class participation part. You will be graded. You'll be graded on how the Jackson Road grows in the next fifteen.
Our grades will be handed to us in twenty years.
So um. Uh with everything that you've uh, everything that we've talked about.
Okay, are we ready?
Okay, with everything that we've heard and talked about um up until this point, about the first hour of the presentation. Um background, zoning, uh all that sort of thing. Um is there anything I missed, Jim?
I think the only other thing is um, you know, our climate resolution. And when we think about um growth, development, et cetera. How do we actually look at that in a way that we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions? And not continue to increase our greenhouse gas emissions. So that would be the only addition.
So uh with all of that in mind and what you've seen in the. Even like the size of the corridor, I mean, we were talking about a six mile, roughly a six mile long stretch of road. You know, a little bit, not quite six, because Ann Arbor takes up part of it. Um because technically the border of Syo Township goes in most cases on Maple. But you know, at where the Jackson Road hits roughly wagon, because uh the Ford dealership actually. For those of you that complain about the Ford dealership, because occasionally I get complaints about the Ford dealership, it's in the city of Ann Arbor.
Yeah, with their flags and their lights.
That's one less dealership in our township.
Occasionally I get complaints about the Ford dealership and I happily tell them it's in the city of Ann Arbor. So the uh, but that is, you know, that's, I don't want to tip my hat on maybe some weaknesses, but. Um we can go around the horn or if you guys just want to uh just erase that, you know. Make as in in, you know, informal as possible. Um uh but I'd like, I want to get through uh strengths of the corridor. Those are things that you think are good. Happening well, the things that have either developed well, that are good, that you see. Uh uh helps Syo Township as a community. Then we're going to get into the weaknesses, kind of the opposite of that. What's, what, what is wrong with the corridor? What is, what might maybe is um uh uh deficiency that has may maybe been created. And I'm not just talking about the Boulevard, I'm talking about how the corridor has developed and the land uses that we find within the corridor. And then um opportunities. Uh it's too bad that the acronym wasn't different, but it's not cute because it was. S W T O, but it's SWAT, because opportunity should probably be the last thing we talk about. Um but uh then we're going to talk about opportunities and those, that's kind of the fun part. It's all interesting, as a planner, I guess it's all sort of fun in a way, but um. Opportunities where we get, allow on here, okay, well, we have this corridor. We have this, you know, mix in city of Ann Arbor, between city of Ann Arbor and city of Dexter and, you know, what, what do we have that? Really makes this township and this place special? What could happen here to make it more special? And then, you know, what kind of threats do we have? You know, what, what do we see as potential, again, potential problems? Things that could uh be problematic to the township into the future. Um again, not tipping my, my hat, this is really up to you guys. I'm not going to be participating in this part of the, of the presentation. But you know, Sally mentioned that the potential ending of sewer capacity. Now that's definitely around along the corridor. Um you know, things like that. So why don't we start with the Jackson Road corridor strengths? And if, if you want, we can go right along the room and if you don't have anything to contribute, just pass. Um why don't, why don't, let me do that.
So can I, can I say something for a second here about our process? It is almost twenty to nine, we'll be to nine thirty. And people have been sitting around the stable, particularly those who've been involved in these discussions. Um and I kind of wonder if you think it's a good idea to have people talk about various aspects. Of a change in the corridor that they're thinking about. Um I'd be interested to hear from the BOT, for instance, I know we've talked, we had cut dialogue in the planning commission. I'd be interested in hearing from the DDA, what their perspective is. Um.
But if you think all that's gonna flush out in the SWAT exercise, I'm all for it, but I want to make sure. I get some knowledge about what other governmental leaders are thinking about tonight, because.
Do you want to do it in order? Do you want each person to sort of say, here's some strengths and here's some weaknesses?
Strengths first.
Okay.
And then weaknesses.
Okay.
There's a process.
Each letter.
And yeah, and I think, I think what you're talking about will come out.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, we can add some, we can add other ideas.
But we're gonna get all the way around. It should be succinct.
Well, I, I think, I think this is a concise way to get to what you're in. So it doesn't just end up being a free flowing, free flowing stream of consciousness kind of discussion. Um so um.
Mr. Riser. Infrastructure, sewer, water, bus, freeway.
Want more freeway?
No, you think. Infrastructure, it's got. The strength is you got access to freeway, access to the bus, access to sewer, access to water, and you can drive seventy five miles an hour if you're going slow. I'm only kidding.
I know, it's true.
First on the strengths first.
Now I will say that I'm doing this, it's up on the board in the, in the resident.
And bus.
And bus. And bus, there's only a few people online, but this is um, I usually do this with a flip chart. I think this is gonna be a lot easier.
So the Jackson Road. Development, the way it was planned, the median, the um grassy areas on the Boulevard. I think that adds a lot.
Um well, I was just gonna say the bus, um uh I'll say the sidewalks. I also question if bus services, infrastructure.
So bus sidewalk.
It's safe to drive. I remember the two lane Jackson.
Absolutely.
And now it's two lanes, two ways, and it's safe.
Uh it's, it's pretty kinds concentrated, which I think is, is a plus, it's an opportunity.
I think um, one of the things that I learned is that Syo Township's done a good job of having a mix of different kinds of uses. And that um, that's a strength, um that diversity. Uh different kinds of commercial and business. I, I agree with the sidewalks. I think um it really made a big difference recently when the city of Ann Arbor finally connected to the. Jackson Road sidewalk. Um there was a big gap there, just, you know, just within the last couple of years, they extended it out. So now there actually is a contiguous pedestrian path.
Where?
To the city of Ann Arbor along Jackson.
So connectivity to the city.
Like connectivity to the city. And I think, you know, there's other places where we could do that inside of Township, but we have it along the Jackson Corridor. So that gives, that's a strength of that particular quarter.
Sorry, don't mind.
Okay.
And um, yeah, sustainability, bus, sidewalks, and the fact that it's concentrated enough that. We can retain open space. Agricultural.
Agricultural land on Jackson Road?
No, 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 because because of Jackson Road, we are able to get. Bike paths, sort of. Bike lanes on the side of Jackson Road.
Sort of, I think sort of bike lanes, yeah. For the brave.
We have an optimist here, I like that.
I, I think I would go somewhere, Mr. Riser. Infrastructure as far as being able to transport it to the corridor, whether by, by car, by bike, by bus. Really makes it easier for people to access all of the mixed uses that are there.
I, I don't have anything new to add. I'm gonna take a different twist. Um and I think one of our strengths is that people want to live here. And um that affords us an opportunity to do some things. And um, but I would say that we're quickly running out of. Large parcels to be able to do some of the residential stuff. And um, so I'll leave you at that for now.
Being, being last is kind of tough, because you went through everything in my checklist if I had, but uh maybe, you know, I, I think it's been great that. Mr. Lamont and probably Carlisle Warman and all of the master plans that have been done for Jackson Road, whether it was the J route, the corridor. That has been thoughtfully planned for the past, I don't know, forty years. So at least it's been under consideration and it, again, where you're talking at the table. So, and I think we know it's kind of the heartbeat in the spine of, of Syo Township.
Yeah. Um I would add one more thing. I don't think there are a lot of commercial districts that even have very many natural features. And Jackson Road Corridor does have a few areas that are still um that, that. Retain some of those natural dangers.
The vacant parcels? The vacant industrial parcels.
The vacant industrial parts. Areas?
We do have some wetlands.
Jan, in front of the lows, in between low, you know. Right, back in the, in the, some of the creek areas that, that run through.
Behind Toyota.
Yeah.
Maybe that points to how we should think about those little scraps of land that the township controls along the corridor.
Any, so you, everybody heard, before we move on to weakness, does anybody have uh, any additions?
One other comment, our Jackson Road is not an eight mile. Which is improving over the decades, but it used to be just boom, 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 no planning, no nothing. It was a disaster. Major therapy, so we're doing a good job.
Did you agree to the six mile?
Six mile, I, I am going that one very often.
You know. That's a plus.
That's right.
Um, yeah.
Well, I know of one, but I'm not. Oh, no dispensaries? Yeah, no dispensaries.
When you go to Ann Arbor, they have twenty five.
Twenty eight?
We have some very, we have some within walking distance of Jackson Road, however, our Jackson.
Oh, really, Jan?
They use more energy.
Okay.
That's know a lot more about.
Jan, do you want to? We only have a couple of people online.
Can I add one?
Yes.
Um at a recent planning commission meeting, you asked for Doug to go and look at other communities. To see how they worked with the dense areas of uh similar to Jackson Road. So that might be another strength is to find other examples of how other communities have done it successfully. So that we can uh follow those models.
Who isn't that one? Is that what we?
That was one of the ones.
Opportunities.
Yeah, that'd be more of an opportunity.
Yeah.
We'll bring that up in a, in a couple of minutes. Okay, so let's get on to weaknesses. So everyone, everyone be kind, Mr. weaknesses. Um John.
Um it's not pedestrian friendly through the lack of crossings as well as the, how spread out some of the uses are. If you want to walk from Carlisle to um rail to. Session Room, hell, you gotta play Frogger. If you wanna walk to IHA, it's. It's not as dense as it could be in pedestrian for, in pedestrian friendly.
Safe crossings.
Oh, yeah.
And it's also high volume and high speed.
I'm gonna put that in.
Thanks, Rob.
Oh, um a weakness is the potential for piecemeal development. The example I'm gonna use is recent ZBA issue that we dealt with. Where a hotel was requesting a variance for four stories. It was denied and they are now pursuing a PUD. But the limit was two stories. And if the ZBA had granted that variance, it would have been, in our opinion, piecemeal development.
Okay. No, no cohesion, no cohesive, no cohesive development theme or.
Right.
Um it's too wide, it's difficult to cross, that's, that's a big cause of the speeding. Roads are far too wide for forty five miles an hour. I don't think it should be forty five either. In fact, if you look at it on Google Maps, right there in front of the uh, the uh, the old cinema place. The width of Jackson Road from sidewalk to sidewalk is wider than ninety four where wagon crosses. Pretty darn big. Um there's no trees, that makes it very unpleasant to walk on, especially when it's hot outside, you don't have any shade. Um speaking of being unpleasant to walk on, it's loud, it's because of all those cars, like try to have a conversation, get somebody walking on the sidewalk, you gotta yell. It's very unpleasant, I don't like being out there.
Ninety four doesn't help either.
What's that?
Ninety four doesn't help either.
Yeah, but it's definitely the cars right beside you that make it so loud. Ninety four is like a hum off in the distance, it's definitely annoying, but uh, right there on Jackson, it's very loud. Um there's no dedicated bike paths. Sorry, I know that we have strike the gutter down there, but that's a death wish. Um we need something safe for, safe for uh bicycles. Um also the car dealerships, see a parking that's along Jackson Road, um and also the lacks of parks and playgrounds. Also community drive-throughs.
It, I mean, just, yeah, it, it's, it is automobile oriented.
Yeah, past a car dealership, several car dealerships, a bicycle, sorry, a uh attire store. A drive-through bank on my way here on the sidewalk.
Have you ever been hit?
No, I haven't. No, but every time I get on uh Zeeve on the way here, um it's inevitable that either that light or McDonald's, somebody's not gonna be looking for me. Come right in front, in front of me.
Where Brett Cutler's feet. So when um, when you did your presentation, Doug, you had mentioned that we have not done a lot as far as technology in the corridor. And um also the residential, you know, whether it's lodging or mixed use residential. And then the other thing is just in reference uh to making it more um. Compatible with families as far as social and recreation. That would support uh the restaurants and other types of activities in the district. Most are theater. Yeah. Yeah, both were really popular.
Well, I think in some ways, there's some strengths and weaknesses in some things. Um the sidewalks, I think it's great and it was probably a huge step for Syo Township to think of sidewalks on both sides. to think of sidewalks on both sides of Jackson all the way out. So I really, I, I appreciate that, but they're only five feet wide. And that's not really enough to encourage the kind of, um, you know, use by cyclists and pedestrians to really make it welcoming. And I agree that we need crosswalks, safe ways for people to get across. I mean, that's another strength weakness thing because I think it was, um, rushing of the, or, uh, back in nineteen eighties to have a vision of the boulevard. But I've learned that boulevards actually increase automobile speeds and make it, um, less sort of welcoming for pedestrians. So something that was a big plus for automobile traffic is actually a downside for pedestrians. It's great that we have bus service, but it stops halfway out the corridor. I mean, I, I know WAVE sort of extends the service, but AATA only goes all the way to Meyer and then it's, that's the end of it. So, um, there's lots of things.
But we have WAVE, part of our village pays for WAVE.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
People to connect, admire, to take people in.
I think, I think that, that, that's great, um, but I think, you know, ideally we'd like AATA to extend service and, and, and have that go a little farther. Anyway, that's enough for. I guess one more, one, one more weakness is the lack of residential close to Jackson. Although we do have a development that's about to put a bunch of residential right on Jackson.
What was the last one?
Lack of residential right on Jackson. I think, I, I, my view is probably the best place to put it is the south, on the south side of Jackson. For the most part.
Okay, um, I agree particularly with Jeff and Will. And, um, I also want to emphasize for people to, we're so car oriented that for people to get anywhere otherwise, let's say you want to take a bus to get to work in Ann Arbor downtown Ann Arbor you have to worry about the bus schedules to get there. It's difficult to, let's say you live a mile and a half away, you might want to ride your bike to the bus stop where you park your bike. How do you get your bike to that bus stop? I keep seeing a bike that's been locked up to a sign in front of a bus, kind of hanging, it's way up the Zee Road. I think we need to link those things up and also people walking to get to the bus, hard to cross Jackson. We need some crosswalks. So I see, we just have to link all those different ways of getting around so that they're safe and pleasant. Easy to do. Oh, and the two bus services don't particularly link with each other in terms of, you can't call up and say, you know, the three information systems are totally different. If there's any way they can link up with themselves and so if I want to take it and transfer or something, we'd be very cool.
You hit a couple of things that are on my mind. Connectivity, getting people from their neighborhood, whenever subdivision, to Jackson where they can take advantage of many of the amenities that we highlighted and strengths. It's just too hard to do. It's dangerous, whether it's bike or walking. And the other one is, um, we need crosswalks and we need covered bus stops.
We just got no sub-stops.
All of them done.
Oh, not all.
Well, they're not all covered?
We have five. That's, that's all we've got.
Oh, you mean more, more buses?
Not including the one that pre-existed at Meyer.
Right.
So a couple of things, um, utilities are, are weakness. Our wires are utilities, at least in the area of, I, part of Jackson Road where it's not located where people thought they were. Just the problem, the electric infrastructure is poorly maintained, poorly planned and poorly operated along the corridor as I'm sure we're all aware of. And to point out a DTA, DDA point of that, we have money technically in our plan to vary electric lines. We budgeted somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year at the end of the year. Unfortunately, that doesn't really get you very far as DTA's cost here. Miles roughly, depending on what voltage it is, half a million dollars. Entertainment uses are very minimalism today. It's difficult to use turnarounds at some of the, at some points, especially during uses of all of our vehicles in a day. One other thing that DDA's talked about, that other people touched on, just to give you guys information, is bus, bus service and crosswalks. There is, I know specifically interested in something doing some additional crosswalks. I don't know what that looks like, but it's something I've talked to other people at DTA about. So there's some interest there. Now, Service Act was fortunate enough to talk to the former PR, uh, public relations person for AATA. She's now retired, but she gave me some really good people to talk to about how to spearhead getting additional bus service and trying to connect further down Jackson Road. I don't know if the DDA will spearhead that, but at least we have somewhere to go and talk to. Yeah, sorry.
That was great. I'm trying to keep up writing down, but I think, Doug, you captured a lot so far. I hate Jackson Road. I think it's ugly. I avoid it at all costs. I don't mind the traffic. I like to drive. But, um, I go other ways. I like my, my neighborhood, even though it's off Jackson Road. It's, reminds me of up north. I've lived in twenty-six different communities. Lubonia, Flint, Garden City, Westland, Myland, Plymouth, Canton. I can name in the ones that were my favorite were the ones that had quaint little downtowns. Even Ann Arbor, you know, they've got that. We don't have that. Myland had the little old fashioned downtown Dexter. I love to go to Dexter. It's that, you know, that character, the character, um, we're missing trees. And I know the, um, the medians, they have poor soil, so it's hard to, and there's no water out there. It's hard, um, it's not impossible. We have burnt out buildings still. Pizza Hut is one of them. Uh, we have properties that further, and I wish we could expand all the way to Parker. But there's properties down there that, you know, as soon as you cross from Lima Township over, then you're like, oh, here's this, this part of SiO that is just, um, run down. Now, there's some cute houses, I don't, you know, the little houses, but yeah, it's just the character is, um, in a lot of this. I will never walk on Jackson Road. I don't care how, um, dense it is. It's just, it's just too busy, too much for me. Now, I'm talking personally. This is, you know, I, I understand about other people's lifestyles. But, um, I would like to see it as, you know, let's bring beauty. I mean, the rest of SiO is gorgeous. I mean, is that the, it's her secret is to, you know, they come into Jackson Road, it's like, oh, it's ugly here. We're not gonna move here, but, you know, why not? You know, have a.
What was that? I don't think we have that problem, people not wanting to move here.
Well, if it's, yeah, affordability is another thing. But, you know, anyway, um, I would like to see something done with Jackson so it is, is better looking, nicer. And, you know, a lot of these ideas of having density. What was it? Um, yeah, you know, in Pittsfield Township where they built off of Oak Valley. So there's some, and I was looking, they're more modern, but it's still that, that same concept of.
Kind of downtown-like?
Yeah, kind of downtowny. And I think, I mean, isn't Ann Arbor Jackson Road supposed to be your downtown?
And we can create pockets along Jackson Road.
Yeah, and there's, um, there's parcels that could be cleaned up. I mean, the American Roach sat there for how long? Yeah, so.
The furniture at Myers are faux.
That's a good thing that one's.
Have you noticed that, that little corner at the corner of Zeeb and Jackson, it looks ugly? The weeds are growing up in the pavers. They don't.
It's not well maintained.
Where, where's that? At the, right there on the Meyer property at the corner of Jackson and Zeeb.
And the trash, that's another thing to make sure. Everybody, CBS has a ton of trash in there. They need to be held accountable and say, clean up your own property. But just along Jackson Road. Yeah, I think, um, wasn't there a group last year that got together and went out and cleaned up Jackson Road with the trash? Remember that?
DDA does.
Is it annual? Yeah.
Weaknesses on Jackson Road to me are that we don't have a clear strategy between north and south. It's as if anything can happen on either side, which I think then leads to an opportunity. If you have no strategy, then you're always trying to figure out how to get across, how to get across. Um, an opportunity could be that you focus the walkable things on the south side. Clearly defined areas so that there's an attraction where people can come. And if they had to drive there, but to get to a parking lot to then go to a restaurant, go to a store. I think there's some spots on Jackson that that could be focused to make it more homely. But I think you'd be, you can't have a strategy since it can go on either north or south. It needs to be defined one or the other. I have a bit of different take. I think one of the weaknesses has been our view of the Jackson Road. I think it's been viewed as commercial. And I think the creation of our, um, village is an implement of that. Like we, we just go up and down Jackson Road. We don't pick up any of our seniors off Jackson Road. Bring them on to the Jackson Road. We don't. So the way we've created our transportation plan so far is that that's a commercial corridor. We want to bring people in to, to work at the businesses we have. And we want to, people that live in, along Jackson Road, primarily, uh, silo farms. We want to bring them, get them to, you know, to work. So I think a vision, and that's what we're here about, we're starting to talk about it. But I think that has held us back. We've had this issue of multifamily use in this corridor, and yet we've not done anything about it because our vision has always been focused on commercial. So I'm really glad to hear about all these ideas that people are talking about. I think it's great. And I'm really glad we have this meeting tonight because I'm hearing a lot of stuff from a lot of stakeholders that make a lot of sense on how we change the corridor, trees, walkways, et cetera, et cetera. And I do agree, I think, you know, because it's such a long stretch, it's not a downtown city. It's not a downtown Dexter. It's not a downtown Chelsea. But we could create pockets along the Jackson corridor that create more foot traffic, more interest in our residents to go to Jackson Road to do things. I, for one, I miss the theater. I, I question that developer. So you can't, you can't, you can't find another theater owner to go in there. So, um, that may be a function of the industry with COVID. I mean, movies took a hit, theaters took a hit. So I gotta drive all the way to the rave or go to the Chelsea one or the Celine Theater. Or I could go downtown too, but downtown Ann Arbor. But, um, I think that's real key too. You have to have a reason to go out except for buying a car, getting your car serviced. I mean, we've got some, we've got some good starts with some restaurants. And I think another weakness is the kind of restaurants we're bringing in. We don't need more fast food. I'm not against fast food. If you want to eat fast food, okay. But we need some that people want to come and park and be communal. Carlisle, like the Session. We need more of that where people come out to be communal with each other and their families and friends and stuff, so.
One more thing I just want to add, um, we only have Meyer or Bush's. I mean, Bush's, it's not on Jackson Road, but I would like to see more grocery type, I guess. I don't know what the, I guess it would be retail, but, yeah.
Lack of diverse grocery.
Yes, yes.
Options or something like that.
Need a food hub like, um, the one up on, or, or more like.
Or there's.
Oh, yeah.
There's this really cool marketplace in Philadelphia. And this, and they have all, it's kind of reminds me of the Eastern Market. There was a butcher, there was.
The Carrick Town?
Yeah. Veggies, there was the wine, there was this. That would be great, a great place on Jackson.
I, I think I ninety-four is a weakness that fortunately that's our northern boundary to, to the J-Rot district. So, you know, I've, I've heard a couple of times that, um, you know, residential doesn't want to go there because between, you know, Jackson Road, nine ninety-four and the noise. Although I will tell you, I promote high density in those areas in a heartbeat, you know, you know, extra installation, how we, how we can design it. I, I think the way it's probably been designed, the weaknesses, I hate seeing all the parking lots that are in front, the dealerships. You say there's no trees along, you know, Jackson Road corridor. It's because they want to look at, the dealerships want you to look at the cars. They're not gonna do anything to screen. They put the buildings set back way too far. I'm hoping that as we go through this, we're gonna start getting the buildings closer to the road. Zero setback is fine by me. You know, to de-emphasize the vehicles and parking, uh, and, you know. And everything, I could probably reiterate, everything that's been up there. I've gone to the dealerships, I've taken the bus downtown where the bus stops are located. Walking through the snow and getting completely, you know, your shoes wet. You know, it's dangerous walking across Jackson Road to get to the other side, to take the bus downtown Ann Arbor. Locations without crosswalk, so they're, they're poorly located. It's unsafe, but I'm not gonna reiterate that. So I agree with everything that's out there.
You're right, you know, I ninety-four is like a mode. You know, in terms of all of the township to the north, because there's really no good way to get across. There's, there's really only the Zee Road overpass that has any kind of pedestrian infrastructure in terms of sidewalk. Even that, you feel like you're taking your life in your hands and, and M.Daw just told us, we can't change it.
I think you're, uh, I think you're, can you, can you talk, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, we.
We should have looped you in. Oh, my gosh. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I, I only had one thing I wanted to add to this, this particular, uh, top item, weaknesses. It's sort of a weakness opportunity, but I'll try to, you know, aim it toward weakness. All these ideas that you guys are mentioning are very good ones. But the weakness I'd like to point out is the inability to tie the different elements together to make it walkable. Put the stores right next to the residence. Right now, they could go in anywhere, uh, without being connected. And if we group them, which I know we can, that's the opportunity part, with the form-based, um, coding, we can say this type of use, these uses in this area are permitted and these uses are permitted over here. So we can group our uses appropriately. But that's the opportunity end of it. The weakness is we can't do that right now. We don't do that. Does that make sense?
I'd like to say it's predominantly one story. And you have, the proportion is very, very wide and then you've got these little buildings. So it, it feels, um, also I think, um, even though it, it's a barrier, we have two barriers that are parallel to each other. So you have the density of the, and, you know, the larger density of the township is to the south. And you have the barrier of Jackson Road to pedestrians and different types of transit. And then you have the barrier of ninety-four. And then you have one of our biggest assets, the river. And so it, yeah, we have a dual kind of barrier issue.
Great. That was a long list. That was a long list.
Okay, ready for O?
Let's talk about opportunities. Let me, hold on. And, uh, go, go ahead, Jen. I think Rob, oh, maybe that was a phone.
Opportunities is just the opportunity to take a fresh look. I get to build pockets of desired development, like mixed-use pockets that resemble downtowns. There's an opportunity for that. Kind of like, uh, Pittsfield did along the Oak Valley, when, when they've, they've got you know, residential upstairs and they've got various restaurants and offices and barber shops and Starbucks and things on the first floor. So people could kind of live and walk to where they need to be. So just, just opportunity for a, a new vision for for the corridor, you know, in certain areas.
I see opportunities in having discussions just like this one. Bringing together diverse groups and talking. There are opportunities in potential plan in the future. So I guess I'm thinking this will be a learning experience for many of us. And there will be an opportunity to utilize some of what we have here tonight, better planning.
I think we have a lot of opportunities on Jackson Road. I, I think, um, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Patinson had pointed out earlier, which I'd planned to bring up tonight was that we, we need parks. And I think we have an opportunity to to at least envision that there being parks on Jackson Roads, pleasant public spaces. I think we have an opportunity for denser residential on Jackson Road. There's clearly a big demand for housing in Ann Arbor. Unable to meet, uh, uh, housing demands there. And I think that if we focus on denser residential on Jackson, it'll support a lot of these goals that we've already discussed, such as, um, being able to walk around. I mean, people don't people do go walking just for fun and for exercise. It happens all the time. I'm not saying that. But you can encourage a lot more walking if you had a destination to go to, right? Um, and those businesses that are destinations to walk to are not going to appear if there's no customers for it. Or if they're forced to have a sea of parking, but we told them they can't have a sea of parking. So I think denser residential, uh, I think we have an opportunity to add bike infrastructure. Quite a large, uh, right of way, um, that I think that we could do, uh, more to encourage, uh, alternative means of transportation. Uh, we have the, we have the opportunity to, to envision a proper downtown area. And I hope that that's something that we're all working towards is actually in twenty years, maybe we do have a cute little downtown area. And someone goes, oh, let's go to Silo, look how cute it is and walk around where currently there are car dealerships. We, we have the opportunity to reimagine office spaces. I think that, uh, the whole nation is, uh, realizing that office space is a lot less useful than it was, uh, just four years ago. And so I think that we can, uh, reimagine what we had originally planned as offices, um, for something else, perhaps denser residential. I think we have the opportunity to, um, improve on what Pittsfield is doing with Zone Base. Who's their, sorry, not their Zone Base, their
Four Base.
Four Base, thank you. I, I've visited those places, you know, that, uh, they've got a, a development right I don't know the direction, the cardinal direction, but it's on the opposite side from, uh, Meyer and Target is kind of a catty corner there. I don't, I don't Valley is what we call it. Um, so they've got a nice facade right up front. They've got a huge amount of parking in the back and those businesses, their front doors are all on the parking side. So I think that, you know, we could hopefully learn from that, um, and maybe get some of those front doors actually unlocked and walk in. Courage and support missing. Well, I didn't finish that thought, so that's why.
I don't think there's anything left.
There's always something.
Right now I can't think of it.
So I think, uh, there's an opportunity again for family and entertainment. And then just in terms of, um, being more supportive of residents in the area, maybe a commuter lot. That's aesthetically pleasant looking. I know there's a lot of vehicles because of the car dealership, but I don't believe there is one in the township.
Fire on a commuter lot?
Well, it used to be Meyer offered that, but then they built out their outlots.
There's one, there's one, uh, on right next to the truck stop, Pilot and Ninety-four.
Oh, yes.
A small lot there. It's kind of not well lit and
Is that actually connected to public transit? Be careful for the detour.
Not much.
Does it actually serve by public transit? I couldn't figure out what that
Or is it just a hey, park it, you know, have somebody else?
I'm not sure. I think there's a van ride.
Let's, let's stick with each per joy say.
Oh, that was it.
So opportunities, I, I, I agree. I think we have an opportunity to do more with non-motorized, um, transportation pathways. Um, I mean, this, I think the Z Road pathway, once we connect to the border to border trail, it'll be really interesting to see what kind of a dynamic occurs because, um, there's a lot of use of the border to border trail. And I think the, creating that kind of nexus is interesting to see what impact that will have, even given the unwelcoming nature of the Z overpass. But I think you, you're right. We could do a lot to improve the existing pedestrian cycling infrastructure along Jackson. And, um, and make that maybe just as attractive in its own way, um, as the border to border trail at the other end of Z Road path. I'd like to find, um, a way to get people safely across the other overpasses at Wagner and Baker. Uh, those are actually in some ways tougher, um, than the Z Road pass. That I, I like the idea of, of finding a way to create some public open space along, uh, dedicated and public open space as opposed to just accidental open space. And then I think we could have some, you know, pocket parks. I, I like, um, Rob's thought that he shared at the beginning, um, in terms of creating places for families. I think, you know, in some ways, play, you know, you could sort of find a synergy between some of these restaurants that people go to and get their food and then leave. If there was, they're attractive places to go with your kids where the kids could play for a little while and parents could sit and finish whatever their sandwich or whatever. Real plus, maybe we could even figure out a way to provide Wi-Fi or something. Anyway, I think there's, I like the idea of trying to reinvent a, a more welcoming pedestrian experience along the Jackson Corridor.
I like the idea of the, um, maybe rather than thinking of this one being downtown, the little clustered areas where people are close to one another and, um, close, close to all their needs. There's housing, there's shopping that they need and they can walk everywhere they need. Picture even maybe little roads, excess roads going off. Yes. So they're facing that towards one another and walk or rather than facing right onto busy Jackson. But, um, yeah, and then also the possibility of having a much more comprehensive system that's so that people don't have no cars. It's getting so expensive and not very affordable and aging population inside a township that this could get more younger, less affluent people in their community.
I think this is, the Parks and Preserves are one of our greatest strengths. We really haven't talked about that. I think finding ways to make it easier for people to connect to Jackson, they have the other family, and then they take a walk and go to one of these wonderful parks. I think this, this is the jewel in our, in the township. We, we need to make this more accessible to the main drag.
So probably, I was thinking through a couple, a couple of things that everyone else has said. Two big things come to mind. Uh, one of them is redevelopment. I mean, when you really look at Jackson Road as it is now, there's minimal land that is leftover that's still developable from scratch. It's never had anything. There is going to be businesses and lots that businesses turn over and there's just a new use that comes up for that. I mean, one of the best examples of that probably is the theater. One of the things I've talked to several people in the community about is if you could turn that into dense housing, do some, some other people set here where you have some of those basic needs that with a, a smaller grocery unit, um, maybe, you know, a nail salon or a hair care. And having some of those in the base, doing one over four, one over five construction. Where it's a base and base and having something as, as aesthetic. And then I almost think of having like a opening or a clearing where it's like a town square or like top of the park where there's grass that could be planted and people could gather as a park. That's something that could really help bring number one, people in. And it was developed densely, that location. You could fit a lot of housing units, you have access to transit, it's something that makes sense. Pathways are, are a big thing. I think back to when I was growing up in Bray, there was a lot of Genoa Township. Went through a big phase of building paths about two thousand and four, two thousand and five. And it's something we've done here. So it was basically able to fight downtown as a teenager to go get your haircut or go, you know, go Derek Green or go do something. Something where we're still sort of getting there and we're getting there fast, but how do we make that easier for people on corridor walls, maybe it's safe and also make it skimming across?
Well, I think, um, Jackson Road, since, I mean, you, you have things on there, but it's not where we're in a city already that's built up and it's harder to develop when there's already development there, you know, to change the character and whatnot. So we have a lot of open places. There's, you know, old buildings that could be taken down, you know, for those extra drive-throughs. Right? No, I'm, I'm kidding aside. So, um, we have the new pickleball. Is that many or?
Yeah.
Yeah, many. Yeah. And I would like to see some type of sports complex, you know, promote, promote more team sports. Tennis, um, well, not out, outdoor pickleball, there's too many issues with that, but, um, you know, volleyball, it could even be soccer, you know, like wide, wide world sports. I mean, I played soccer there for a long time. I coached many teams and that was always a great thing because it's all year long. I would love to see bowling again. And if we could have like a pocket along, you know, maybe not next to residential, but enough or close enough where they could walk down there. That would be great. I would love to see real parks and, you know, I know that the, we call our parks are more, um, trails.
Nature preserves.
Nature preserves. And they're, to me, um, you know, especially when you have little kids, I think you do. You know, to, to take your child to a, a park that has swings and, you know, to commute, um, connect with the other, um, little children, get to know people. Uh, yeah, so more family entertainment. But as I said before, um, grocery stores that are even the farmer market type thing, um, we could promote more of our local, um, farmers. You know, we want to, um, have our local, um, meats and eggs and that type of thing. And then we can promote our farm, farmers and kind of keep it all together. But I think, you know, the blank slate is really, that's, I think that's the gem because we have it's the canvas we can paint on. And if it was already painted, we have to have a lot more work in, yeah.
I think we have an opportunity, uh, now to define the areas that might be considered walkable downtown-ish. Pick spots on a map. Is it Jackson Plaza for redevelopment? Is it somewhere west of, of Myers? Close?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah.
Well, I'm on the south side.
No, but, okay.
I'm on the south side, okay? Intentionally. Because as long as we say stuff is on both sides, then you're always get this problem of getting across there. But we could define specific areas for redevelopment that would concentrate where houses are, where you're going to have restaurants, some parks, some entertainment. Let's find those areas and then, and then build to it. Because if we never define in this entire, however many miles, then it will always be some here, some there. And so I personally would like to focus on the south side because you get rid of that, uh, problem of getting across Jackson Road. Or you pick specific areas that you want to concentrate in. That specific area is where you improve the crossover.
On both sides then.
To both sides.
Yeah.
But if you find where that should be and you have this similar development or parks on the other side, then instead of saying, how do we get across Jackson in this five mile? How do we get across Jackson in this quarter mile section here and here? So it's more defined, it's more trying to find where do you want it to be? Where do you want this center of downtown? In the sense of there's roads off of Jackson Road. And that's what led me to think about Jackson Plaza because it already has, you know, as a float. Don't put pickleballs courts outside by residential because people across the United States are leaving out the noise. Oh my gosh. It really it's the end of sense. He said it sounds like a shot every time. So this meeting is an opportunity. I'm feeling hopeful. Um, I've sort of entertained this mixed use residential and commercial. Not commercial and industrial. About a couple of years ago, when the, um, suburban slash Lithia project came to us. And I was against it and I suggested we think about some housing in that area. And there was a lot of pushback. There's a lot of pushback. There was some pushback, I shouldn't even say a lot. There was some pushback from the planning commissioners who could not envision that idea. Uh, one problem was it was right on the freeway. It was going to live one of them on the freeway. Well, a lot of people live on the freeway as, as, um, as the development of Oak Valley on Ninety-four has occurred. But anyway, it was, it was like, it was, um, a new idea, a new concept, and there was no room for it. And so I'm really glad to be here at this opportunity to meet with you and hear all these ideas. And I'm, I'm hoping that the opportunity turns into a working group because we need the planning commission. We've been talking about these things for a year or more. Sidewalks, pedestrian, et cetera. And so to, 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 to take that into, uh, action, we need the, the, um, DDA and we need the, uh, board of trustees and manager. We need you two, um, to start to make it happen. You know, chunk by chunk, section by section, whatever it is we want to do and how. So I would propose that this opportunity we've had today to come together that we create a working group to keep the opportunities open and get, get started on where we're going to go. It's going to take some time, it's going to take some years. But, um, I'm glad everybody came today because I really think this meeting, um, gives us an opportunity to start what we, what we all, it sounds like everybody's interested in doing.
I, I, I think we had a great opportunity today at Affordable Housing, uh, along the Jackson Road corridor. I think it's a huge issue. You know, I, I think with either rezoning or form-based zoning, I think we should have at least a minimum, anybody who comes in, a minimum two to three stories. So we're not going to listen to, uh, you know, So we're not going to listen to, uh, you know, developments that come in that are one story. It's going to have to be two to three stories and you're going to start going up. And we're going to start adding residential units that hopefully will be affordable or at least bring the pricing down for rents or, you know, for condos.
Another phrase.
Yeah, yeah, attainable. So I think we have a great opportunity. It is along a transit corridor. I think it's perfect for, you know, just new redevelopment there. That's going to be at least a minimum of two or three stories just to start. So I think that's, that's exactly where it should occur is along the Jackson Road corridor.
Would you, would you use a density bonus?
I don't even, no, no bonuses. It's going to be a minimum requirement.
Required.
Anybody who comes in.
And then maybe you could do density bonuses on top of that.
Yeah.
The economy's a skill for the developer is they need to be able to, you need to bring units to be funded.
If they build a really tall building, but it's all market rate, then you're not really getting affordability. I was just thinking, you know, you can build up, we want you to build up this much, but if you go this much, you know, we'll give you the density bonus, you can go that much higher, but it has to be this much, this much affordable.
No affordability.
And, you know, and again, it's, it's a suggestion because we have, we only have so many REUs also. But I think this is the place that we should be increasing our densities along, you know, transit corridor. And this is how we can hopefully address some of the affordability issues.
Now, if you target spaces where that happens, then that becomes your restaurant, uh, entertainment.
Absolutely. Retail below.
Instead of a six-story building, um, apartment has and another one is a mile down the road. If they were grouped, it's more cohesive.
And I think that would help us monitor our REU as well, like if we have this set out on both sides and how much REUs, then we can have another similar down here because the, yeah.
It's going to be dictated by the opportunity property.
Yeah, and we had a conversation a while ago about how can we change the, the look of Jackson Road, you know, Jackson Road. And you said, um, something about changing the ordinance to, um, bring in more retail. Like that, that's how, because then that's when it's, um, I don't think you used marketed, but the developers that are looking to develop would see, oh, this is what, what SIA wants. Is that what I remember our conversation? Because right now they can come in and say, okay, here's, um, your C four and this is what we can put. And we're like, well, we want our Jackson Road to look different, but we have to allow them under the C four zoning, right?
Yeah, I, I don't exactly recall that, but, um, but we probably were talking about like form-based ideas that we're more interested in kind of what the form of the structure than use the structure. And to encourage, you know, variety of land uses so that it's not just, this is C two, this is office, this is industrial.
That's why we are so hoofed.
Yeah, so we need to change the ordinance.
Prime for development.
We don't want all self-storage facilities.
With you, Mr. Superbarn.
Another car wash.
Or another car wash.
Anything else first?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yeah, I also think that, um, the redevelopment that supports carbon neutrality and I mean, all of this walkability and so forth and, and density, all of that does. But there, I think along with that, um, we also need to look at how we can include renewables and some of those other things in, in this. So it's really looking at, uh, that carbon neutral future.
Mr. Hyde.
Okay. Several people have been talking about this very thing. And that is, uh, what I was alluding to earlier and that was we have the opportunity to cluster different uses in a common area in, in order to get the synergy of walkability, uh, storefronts, uh, high-density residential. And we can do that with form-based, uh, like Jeff was saying. I think you were saying that we could do what Pittsfield did, only we could learn from what they did and make it our way. So if we wanted to make it courtyards like Ryan is saying, or we want to make it carrytown like somebody else brought up, we can, we can discuss how we can cluster the, um, uses in different areas. And, and I think Kathleen, you were saying we would, uh, maybe do it all, pick an area that we want to do it on. But what we can do is we can define different areas where we want this to be the industrial area, this to be the, uh, residential, retail area combination. So that's what the opportunity for doing form-based and also adding the uses that we permit in different areas. I think Pittsfield did that, didn't they, Jen?
I just like to add one thing. I forgot to mention this at the beginning of the meeting. We have two more hours after this, just kidding. Jessica, uh, clerk, Jessica Flintop did call me just before this meeting and she sent her regret. She wanted to be here, she couldn't make it, she was with, uh, her, one of her sons, I think they were doing something. But I just wanted to let, so she didn't just not call. She, she, she called me and said she wanted to be here, so I forgot to mention this, wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you.
She wanted to be here.
Yeah, I had, just a couple of things. Uh, I think we, this is the opportunity to redefine mixed use, number one. And, um, also, uh, there's an asset that SIA has and we have this whole little linkage of reuse shops and so forth. And I'm trying to think of, you know, how can, you know, that, how can that become a part of, of this, you know, sort of culture too of, um, you know, it doesn't all have to be new and shiny, but we really make use of what we've got. The other thing that we do have is not everything has to be redeveloped, maybe in, you know, maybe the heights and so forth in certain areas. But I think about what, um, Holmes did with, you know, some of those industrial buildings too. I think, you know, uh, and those are very successful, you know, Sessions was very successful. So it's not, I, so I think i- if we could really look at that, you know, where does this density go and then where? And that will also support some of these more creative opportunities too. But not, um, i- i- and so we need some of those areas for the reuse shops. We need some of those areas for the urban wood. Um, and because we're so close to, you know, the, the rural piece, I think the linkage with the local food and so forth, uh, you know, support what is best in SIA.
More Maitawi Tao works.
Yes, Maitawi Tao works. I mean, some of these very unique businesses. You know, how, how do you, how do you do that and not lose it to, um, you know, more national brands and stuff? Yeah, how do we keep that unique? We have that opportunity to do that.
You're going to do a lightning round of threats?
The only good thing I can say about threats is it's sort of an odd category.
Before we move on, can I add?
Yes.
An opportunity for this group is to work on the PUD ordinance so that it's, there is an open, transparent and fair, PUD ordinance related to public benefit. So developers coming in know what to expect and residents, uh, know what to expect. Um, and, and all three groups I think need to work on it, the BOT, the DDA and the Planning Commission. And again, everyone at the table can research other communities that have had successful, concentrated business areas and, and bring those into future work sessions. I believe that, number one, this was a brilliant idea. And I hope that this is an ongoing process with this particular group. I, uh, I, picking up on what, uh, Jeff said earlier, I kind of disagree, but picking up on it and modifying it a little bit, I think if we have the businesses on Jackson with the residential behind them, then they're still within walking distance. But, uh, the business section is, is concentrated on Jackson. And then following that, we can't put residences behind the, the north side businesses on Jackson because of the highway. So maybe the north side is the mixed-use places like Turumo. Whereas the south side is more, uh, residential-friendly, uh, businesses like the grocery store. I love the idea of the pockets of downtown areas. And lastly, sorry, John, I, my only excuse is that I was, uh, I was channeling my inner John Reiser and I, I spoke in and butted in when you were doing yours. I apologize for that.
Okay, so like, like, so, so Will is right, this is our lightning round. Usually threats are the quickest because we're kind of talking about weaknesses and they kind of merge together.
I just want to say it's, uh, nine forty-five.
We gotta get through this.
I'm leaving at ten.
Anybody wants to leave?
Doug, give us a threat.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Example. Sure, capacity.
Get this shit done or else.
Yeah, this, this could be, this could be, um, very quick. Um, but I would say sewer capacity. It's a big, maybe it's not a lot, maybe there's lighted conditions to the corridor. And it's just raising it, so we're going to have to go around table, but.
The MDOT and, uh, WCRC.
Yeah, Road Commission, MDOT.
Yeah.
It ain't our road.
Yeah.
But not letting us to.
Yeah, and, you know, state regulations, uh, around the roads.
What about, um, sort of that, that creep of, uh, auto dealership, uh, function sort of spreading further westward?
Okay. Who else? Raise your hand.
I was gonna say lack of clarity from the township on what we want. We're working to solve that, but that was one of my biggest learning curves. You know, that's a funny question, I mean, it's just.
I have one. Process was very confusing as to what the township wanted. And buy rights zoning.
Reacted.
Complacency.
I said, I said buy rights zoning. In other words, if they want to do something that's industrial that comports with it, they get to do something whether we want it or not. So it's kind of the corollary to, what we want there, it doesn't matter if, what we want there is what we've zoned there. And if they, if what they want there is in our zoning, they get to do it. So buy rights zoning is a threat.
Complacency. We have to move, people. We're hot, developers want to come here, people buying land, we only got so much left on Jackson. There's so, you know, so we have to be.
Look at the property ownership of those parcels along Jackson, you start to see some patterns.
Yes.
Who's, who's buying it up?
During a, uh, pre-app meeting, I suggested to one of the developers, R A A R Brower or something. I said, you know that other parcel you got, well, look as there's some residential. And he said that he, he had looked into that seven years ago. I said, well, we're really interested in some residential. And he finally said, well, I'll take a look again, so we'll see. And I think that's the kind of stuff, you know, I have a problem talking to people, so I didn't even know who they were, but.
Uh, any other threats?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that there's a threat from within, we're not, uh, there's a threat of not going, uh, sorry, there's a threat of making excuses, believing that car dependency is a necess, is a necessity within our township. Either it's rural nature, it's spread out.
Doug, not compliance.
Sorry.
Complacency.
Complacency, yeah, you said complacency.
You just comply, complacency.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not such a good speller.
He's trying to type, he's trying to type fast.
We'll edit it.
I've tried to capture some stuff, I'll send it to you. Looking for action.
Okay, any other threats, threats, threats before we close up? Anybody?
Dragistic politics are a threat.
Yeah, politics can be a threat. If the developer thinks the political environment is unstable, they won't, they won't come here. I mean, I've heard it.
Or, or if we can't get our act together, we might not be able to sort of outline around these goals that we, we're setting out.
Yeah, well, here, this is another example, um, and I have been, and I know Kim, that you brought, this was your idea, but I've been saying over and over again, the chairs of the committees need to be talking or have, have a committee along with the department heads and the manager and then the BOT because I see ideas in different places, but they, they're not congruent with other ideas. And I'm not saying that one idea is better than the other, but we need to, you know, come to a middle ground. And we're not going to be able to do that if we're off doing our own thing.
Yeah, you don't get, you, you can't, you don't build enough momentum to get anything done.
I think chain, chain businesses, like corporate kind of.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, I mean, we, we fended off a dollar store, uh, from one of the outlets near a few years ago, but, uh, you know, we, we won't always win those, those battles. And, and I think actually there's a, a restaurant that's opening up that's, you know, kind of more like, yeah, more like what we're looking for right there. It has games, well, it has games and, you know, it's more family. That's what it's, what's the one that you, was where the standard used to be?
Sam Hill.
Sam Hill, that's one chicken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a two, Sally wants to say, Sally, you had a hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, infrastructure redundancy is a threat as well. Or lack of redundancy, I should say.
Yeah, resilience. Yeah, lack of resilience. Yeah.
Is that like sewer line?
It's like if your sewer line breaks, you don't have another one.
Sewer line.
Correct.
Infrastructure resilience.
And you're in deep doo-doo.
More than you want. I think, I think funding too, I mean, just, I think that's. Funding. Funding. The money.
Um, Sally, anything else? Nope.
That was all I wanted to add.
Yep, and then Bob Hyde had his hand up also.
That was great meeting.
Okay, any other? Yep, good, and, uh, Rob, I believe that's you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, blank. That, uh, infrastructure, if infrastructure and planning aren't done together, that, uh, planning can overwhelm in- infrastructure. So as new businesses are coming in, uh, have them add to the infrastructure through PUDs or other means so that they're strengthening the infrastructure as they come in and not overwhelming it in the long term.
No other hands up on the line?
Okay.
Final words for the cause.
Thank you, everyone, for the time and.
I have a final question. If we, what are, what are next steps? Let's say we want to try some, some forms-based mixed use. Do we do that? Do we try it in this section? Do we try it in this section? Do we do the ordinance? What, what, what do we do? What are the next steps and what are they?
So what we did before with master, with the master plan was we had a master plan implementation committee. And you could, so you could, I'm not saying you need to do exactly that, but you could have a subcommittee of the planning commission and you could draw in, you can draw in people from outside the planning commission as well, just like with the sustainability task force. And, and, you know, form the working group that, um.
Because it would like, it would be nice to have some business representation too. I mean, you know, we don't have quite that balance.
Well, what I think and what we've tried to do a little bit of the DDA after, it's really meet every other one. And it's, it's get a lot of time. We try and understand the issue, we try and take some action, whether we're not going to move forward with it for one reason or another, whether we're going to take some step towards the next step of the process. I think that's something that sometimes happens is, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of information shared, but we don't take next steps. So I was actually going to be, my question was to rise and ask specifically, what are we going to do to sort of move this forward?
Maybe formulate a working group.
Well, that, that could be. I'm going to summarize these, summarize our, uh, comments tonight and try to come up with some actions. And those actions will be discussed at the Planning Commission, perhaps Towne Report. And that could lead to any of these items. Now, I would, I initially believed these would lead to either one or two things. One, uh, uh, maybe a sub-area review of the Jackson Road corridor plan. But if we think that plan is okay, which I think it probably is, we could probably launch, um, into some, uh, some ordinance amendments to the Jackson Road corridor, whether that's a form-based or something like that.
Yeah.
But I think summarize this report, get back with the planning commission and then we'll, we'll go from there.
But I like your idea about the overlay. The form-based code being overlay, because we can start with something, create that a lot easier than redoing our whole zone.
And, and bringing the DDA in, I think, you know, maybe the DDA just has to step up its game, you know. The, the, it, it's sort of slowed, from what I understand, it's slowed down. It used to meet every month and then it went to every other month, but we could just meet more often and do more work. The, the, in, in the. The, the, and the good thing about having the DDA and DHT is that its focus is that area and it has some resources that it can put into doing things.
We have right now, it's the last winter price up, one, one, two, we get money every year, so.
Yeah.
Some of that's spoken, but I don't know.
How much?
There's about one, 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 two in the account right now.
We just have to pay off our bonds.
We have to pay off our bonds, yeah, one point one, one point two million, we get about five, six hundred thousand dollars a year at that base. That was, that was what I was told last time, so there's money to help with that.
There's money left over after the bonds are paid for each year, so.
Well, with that, someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's a support, all right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for stopping.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you guys, so excited to show it up. I was a little late leaving the house.
Thank you all for letting the public contribute.
Here we get restaurants.